Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We will call the May 1st meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to know for the public, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, for purposes of information in cases needed, there's an automatic external defibrillator in the back of the chambers, just in case, and that is available for the public. Also, could you please silence or turn off any electronic devices? And with that, we'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will call the Board of Equalization Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chair.
Here.
All present.
Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting held Tuesday, April 24, 2018. Letter B, Call for a Meeting and Set Tuesday, May 8, 2018, as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
I'd just like to mention, so those of you who are watching and in the audience, I don't have my voting machine here and I have to bum a microphone from Dan, so I am voting and I just tell him. So it is public record, but I'm really here in spite of a faded-out name on the vote board. Thank you.
Let me know for the record, too, the Board system is down, so if anybody, Commissioner, wants to speak, just give me a wave or auction sign and I'll pick you up. Item C is Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any items related to the Board of Equalization that may not officially be listed on the Board of Equalization's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none. We have resolutions. What's the will of the Board? And adjourn? Motion to approve items D, E, F, and G, and adjourn. Seeing no comment, please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
We'll now call the Douglas County Board of Commissioners Meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair?
Here.
All present.
Item 1, Minutes and Claims. Letter A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting held Tuesday, April 24, 2018. Letter B, Approval of Claims Submitted for Payment and Process through Tuesday, May 1, 2018. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
We now come to the Consent Agenda. There are six items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there anybody that wants to remove an item? There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to comment again on C, we're reappointing folks that I'm sure are worthy to the Douglas County Planning Commission. I know that a couple of them have served for a very long time. And again, I'd like to reiterate best practices, policy of boards that I hope that we would adopt someday in term limits. Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
Item 3 is Recognitions and Proclamations. Letter A is a resolution proclaiming May 28 as Disproportionate Minority Contact Awareness Month in Douglas County. I'm going to read part of this and Commissioner Borgeson is going to read the other half. It says, "Whereas in May of 1988, the National Coalition of State Juvenile Justice Advisory Groups met in Jackson, Mississippi, and adopted a set of recommendations to provide to the President and Congress to address the differential processing of minorities within the juvenile justice system, and whereas this month marks the 30th anniversary of that meeting, and whereas the advisory groups' report eventually formed the basis for the Fourth Core Requirement of the OJJDP Act, commonly referred to as the Disproportionate Minority Contact, in which the states are required to access and address the disproportionate contact of youth of color at all points in the justice system, from arrest to detention to confinement, and whereas DMC continues to be a significant problem in Douglas County and in the counties throughout the United States, and..."
Whereas this Board has recently taken the significant step of hiring Douglas County's first-ever Disproportionate Minority Contact and Compliance Coordinator, who is tasked with coordinating efforts throughout Douglas County to significantly reduce DMC in our juvenile justice system. And whereas to commemorate the 30th anniversary of the advisory group's recommendations and to bring attention to the DMC issue in our county, this Board wishes to declare May 2018 as Disproportionate Minority Contact Awareness Month in Douglas County. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby declares May 2018 as Disproportionate Minority Contact Awareness Month in Douglas County. Be it further resolved that this Board encourages the state of Nebraska and all Nebraska counties and cities in collaboration with members of their communities to engage in intentional and deliberate efforts to eliminate policies and practices which contribute to DMC. Dated this first day of May 2018, and I would move approval.
This motion, Mr. Borgeson, is a second. Seconded by Commissioner Morgan. I'd like to recognize our DMC Chairs of our DMC Committee here in the audience, Ms. Levonstennis Williams and Mr. Mark LaFleur.
Levonstennis Williams, 1941 South 41st Street, Suite 502, Omaha, Nebraska. I am just so excited I could really speak. Because not only was I there in 1988 as a senior law student when this report was adopted, it meant nothing to me at the time other than a bunch of rhetoric. But I will tell you that it was a lady from Nebraska who was a really vocal opponent. She's now passed on. To get this past, just a white lady out of western Nebraska. But I was also here last year, a year ago. It was yesterday when I asked on behalf of the Douglas County DMC Committee that you all consider elevating the work of DMC from just a committee to a full-time position. And look where we are today. I mean, I am just like, I could barely sleep last night because I couldn't wait to get here today to just thank you guys. I just, look where we're at. We have a federal grant now to allow us to not only work on day-to-day efforts of reducing DMC, but to also conduct a study. We have a proclamation, and we weren't here a couple of years ago. We weren't at this point in accounting. So I just want to thank all seven Commissioners for the work that you've done diligently to advance this, including adopting the recommendation to hire a full-time person. With that, I'm now going to turn it over to my co-chair, Mark LaFleur, who has some special presentations to make this morning.
Thank you, Levon. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center, 8920 Wyoming Street. I didn't sleep last night very well either. I have to admit. This, I mean, where we've come in this amount of time is, it really deserves to be applauded. And I echo Levon's sentiment in thanking all the Commissioners in moving the dial and helping us address DMC from a closer level. DMC is an issue. We see it a lot at the youth center. And as we reported previously, we see upwards of 65% African-Americans in detention. And with the population in Douglas County, less than 11% for those ages 10 to 18, that really is an issue to address. And certainly, there are some cases in which there is a degree of disparity where minorities may actually stay longer for the same charges. So we've got our work to do, but we really have to applaud the work that's been done so far in a couple of places. We have recognition plaques for Mary Ann Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Chris Rogers. Everyone's had an input, but your work has really made the difference and it's really helped us recognize what the issue is and how to address it. And I'd just like to read to you, Mary Ann Borgeson, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, for your unparalleled leadership and commitment to moving the dial on DMC in Douglas County. And we really just like to say thank you so much. We also have one that says the same for our Commissioner, Commissioner Chris Rogers, which says the same for your unparalleled leadership and commitment to moving the dial on DMC in Douglas County. Commissioner, we really thank you for all of your work. Any questions before we sit?
I'll probably sleep better tonight.
I just want to say thank you for this recognition, but really, I want to turn it around and recognize the both of you for your persistence in bringing information to this Board in what we should be looking at, what we should be doing, recommendations of, again, hiring a full-time coordinator and pushing us and raising your voices and telling us that we need to take this, we need to take hold of this. You know, when you look back 30 years, this is the anniversary and we're still talking about this issue. Yes, we've come a long way. And again, I think it's a lot to do with what work you're doing and I thank you for that. But I am pleased with the Board in where we are in actually stepping up our efforts to address this issue. And we're not going to stop now. So thank you for what you've done in bringing the issue to the Board.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'm really thrilled to see that you took the time and paid attention to the people who've really been pushing this so hard for so long. And I think it's one of the reasons why this Board really gets along with each other. Sometimes we, I like to kid you-know-who down there, but anyway, what are you laughing about there? Anyway, we get along really well. We believe in the same things. And we believe in what you're doing. And we know what you're doing because of these, particularly because of these two Commissioners who have stepped out and speak out on your behalf when we're in meetings, when we're having coffee, wherever we are. There's a lot of support for the work that you do. It is very important work. And I think that it proves that your, the Commissioners, particularly the two that you cited, are listening to you and they're working with you. You're making a difference and the work that you did really makes a difference. And we're so fortunate to have two people like Mary Ann and our Chair, two be such national leaders. Chris, of course, is a former President of NACO and Mary Ann is moving up that ladder. They're so very well informed and they have the right connections to make things happen here in Douglas County. So I'm, I just have to say that I'm very proud to be a member of the Board with these two and the other folks that are on this Board. It is really a group that's working together for the benefit of the community. And when you bring us things, we listen. So thank you.
Levon and Mark, I want to add into both of those comments and just say that, you know, nothing happens by anybody that sits up here alone. You all's work to create the space to open this thing up and make sure it works theirs. The conversation's been around for a while and it takes the right amount of advocacy of push and political will and it all came together for this opportunity. So the interesting thing you all noted and the resolutions noted is everywhere. And it's, you know, we took a trip to South Dakota last week. And even though people try to say it's most based on size, it's all relevant. They had a facility that probably had about 50 to 60 capacity. They were a JDA site. They had 35 people in there and they had a 65% DMC rate of Native Americans. And so it's not just a, it's an Omar thing. It's a relative place thing. And again, I want to thank you all for your work creating the space to give the Board room to work and for the Board's political will to push it. And we look forward to continuing to help and appreciate your work. Board members, too. With that, we'll move on to Item B. Oops. We do. Sorry. I thought we had voted. Please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
Item B is a sympathy resolution recognized in the passing of former Douglas County Public Properties Director, Mr. Al J. Hogan. Commissioner Morgan?
And I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Hogan back in the '70s and have a great respect and admiration for his service to our community.
Thank you.
Whereas it was a great sadness that Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of former Douglas County Public Property Director, Alan J. Hogan, on April 13, 2018, at the age of 85. And whereas he is survived by his wife Marilyn Jean Jeannie and his sister Peggy Galton. And whereas Mr. Hogan was born in Pocahontas, Iowa, in 1932. And in the early '50s, served in the Korean War as an Army infantryman. And whereas he started working for Douglas County September 1962 in the county clerk's office. Whereas Mr. Hogan went on to work for the county highway department, county engineer, served as a member of the Papio Watershed Board and the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District. And in 1978, was selected to serve as a Public Property Department Director. Whereas he served in that capacity until his retirement in 2002. And whereas his Public Property Director, Mr. Hogan, oversaw the construction of the Law Enforcement Center, 156 and Maple, the County Youth Detention Center, a $40 million expansion project, and also participate in the Douglas County Correction Facility and countless other projects. Whereas he devoted much of his life to public service, impacting his community and our residents. And whereas Mr. Hogan will also be remembered for his work ethic, dedication to Douglas County and for his enthusiasm for the game of golf. And I remember he and Dan Lynch going out to play sometimes if we finished a Board meeting in time so they could get out there in the afternoon. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby commemorates the life contributions of Mr. Alan Hogan and does hereby formally extend this Board's sincerest sympathy to his family and friends. And Jerry, I know you had a good mentoring program for Al and probably have some words you want to state about that. And I know you called me that Saturday morning. The 13th was on a Friday and I know you called me Saturday about that.
Well, I think I stated at the day of the funeral two weeks ago that this could only be planned by Al. And I think Jeannie agrees. So he either didn't want us there, but if we could have been there, most of us would have been there, including myself. We had some business that day, some budget issues. But like I said that day, it's typical Al. And I think Jeannie agrees. And I think she is pleased that the Commissioners honored Al with this sympathy resolution and happy for her and Al's sister, who will also get a copy of the resolution.
I thank you so much for this opportunity. Al would have been honored and humbled. As you know, he had quite a little trip, many trips to the hospital, skilled nursing and back to Waterford Assisted Living. But people were always asking him, "Well, Al, what did you do?" And he'd say, "I sold license plates." And I'd go, "Well, what else did you do?" He said, "I sold license plates." So I would kind of stick up for him. I said, "Well, you know, he did have a realtor's and a broker's license and he worked with a lot of people and they really worked hard on the riverfront." And, oh, then they were kind of impressed. Most of them hadn't been there, but anyway. See, I never, he got to the point where he couldn't drive and he, thank goodness, he wanted to go everywhere with me, so I took him. And I picked up my mail down on 12th and Pacific. He never did say I want to go by the riverfront, but now I know that's what he wanted to do. He goes, "Let's go to the airport." And I'm going, "Okay." And the next day, it would be the airport again. And like I said, just humbly, he wanted to go see all these projects, but he wouldn't tell me why we had to go to the airport. Thank you, folks. I know he enjoyed his jobs. I know he enjoyed working with you. And thanks a lot. God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Borges.
Well, a lot of memories flooded in when I heard of Al's death. And I was on the Pension Board and worked with him and brought his concerns to others on the Board. He was a very caring person that cared about the pensioners, finding out about what was going on as a result of his asking me and talking to me. We put all that information on the web so it could be accessed 24 hours a day by retirees. That's the kind of guy he was, thinking of others all the time. I have such wonderful memories of him, most of them involved funny things. You know, he was a great guy in helping with voting on the Democratic Party and stuff. And he was out at a Jewish home that used to be out on 52nd Street. And I always thought, I hope I don't offend you, but I always thought that Al was Black Irish. He had the dark eyes and kind of a little bit different complexion. And it's like George Clooney, that kind of a look. He's got the dark eyes. And I always called him Black Irish. And it's kind of because of the Spanish blood that got into the Irish people some. So anyway, he was out there getting the Jewish people, the rest home, to vote. And he never presented himself this way, but he found out early on that they thought he was Jewish. And so Al didn't correct them. He didn't say, he didn't say anything, "No, no, I'm Irish. I'm Hogan," and all that. So anyway, but that was really his way. You know, he was just really a great guy. And Ann and I didn't have any money early on and, not that we do now, but didn't have a lot of money early on when we were going to events and so forth. So we would write, this is a confession now. We would write checks to the Democratic Party and Al was in charge of collecting them when then he conveniently lost the checks. So we got to go, but the checks never made. Sorry to the Democratic Party, but that's the way it goes. Al called me one time when he was working on the riverfront Al called me one time when he was working on the riverfront, and we were talking about what was going on down there, and I think I was in the mayor's office, I don't remember where I was at the time, but he said, I cannot get these guys to move. It just really irks me no end. And I said, well, I'll tell you what I'd do. I said, just condemn it. File an action to condemn the property and see if that doesn't make them come around. And it did. And so Al was able, he was really pleased and able to do some clearing that had to happen. Al was really the epitome of what county government needs and needs. We have a lot of people like him. He really set the standard for how to behave as an employee and how to treat county employment with, in very high regard. And knowing who he worked for, he worked for the people of the county. He was a class act. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Boyle, you just took the words right out of my mouth in terms of class act. When I came on, Al was, he was so quiet. You kind of never knew what he was thinking or what he was up to, but he was always so professional and efficient in getting his work done and information to us. So he always, I don't know, he just held a real special place in my heart and was always friendly. And even after he left and when we saw each other, it was as if we didn't miss a beat. So I'm sorry for your loss. He was very good not only to Douglas County, but to his service to all of Douglas County citizens, and he will be sorely missed. So thank you for sharing him with us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioner Duda.
Just briefly, Al was the epitome of a great county employee, so dedicated. He was smart. I mean, you didn't pick up right away on how smart he was because he was so quiet, but what a great asset he was for us to have had. I'm thrilled that we had the pleasure of getting to work with him for as long as we did.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming down today.
You're very welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Commissioner Moore.
It just occurred to me that I have to say, and that is that Al, and I for that matter, were products of the patronage system. Prior to civil service and unions and everything else, we were hired because of connections. And mine was my father-in-law, Sam J. Howell, and Al's was Dan Lynch. And so that's, it's really interesting because a lot of people think patronage is a failure, not a good system. It really isn't. I mean, there's a loyalty, it's not blind, but there's a loyalty to, you know, appreciation for what you have, and it's really an interesting thing. So I want to acknowledge Dan Lynch's role in bringing us Al Hogan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you.
Is there a motion, second? Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Borges, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
We have the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. We have three copies for you and your family. If you come around, we can shake your hand.
Sure. Whatever you say.
It's just one. He's put it for one section. Okay. We'll now move to item C, resolution in support of repealing an outdated and discriminatory Medicaid law known as the Institutions for Mental Diseases Exclusion which stands in the way of people with serious mental illness receiving treatment. Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we've talked about this issue for quite a while, on and off, and I ran across this Treatment Advocacy Center, and they're actually starting a campaign, basically, for those in government and families to try to get rid of this IMD exclusion, and I'll explain what it is as I read the resolution. Whereas the Treatment Advocacy Center, a national nonprofit organization dedicated to eliminating barriers to the timely and effective treatment of severe mental illness, is encouraging lawmakers and community leaders to support repealing an outdated and discriminatory Medicaid law known as the Institutions of Mental Disease Exclusion. And whereas despite a nationwide shortage of psychiatric treatment beds that has reached crisis proportions, the IMD issue stands in the way of facilities providing desperately needed care. It makes it illegal for facilities with more than 16 beds to receive federal reimbursement for providing life-saving medical care to people with serious mental illness or addictions that are between the ages of 22 and 64. It effectively denies life-saving care and hope of recovery for some of our country's most vulnerable citizens. And whereas left untreated and with nowhere to go, too often these people instead turn to the streets, wind up in our jails, or become statistics in the rising suicide epidemic. And whereas the Interdepartmental Serious Mental Illness Coordinating Committee, a federal panel of experts and administration officials, also recommends repealing the IMD exclusion. Now therefore be it resolved by this County Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby supports repealing the Institutions of Mental Disease Exclusion in an effort to battle the mental illness crisis and help citizens in the United States and Douglas County, Nebraska, receive the life-saving care they need for mental illness and substance abuse disorders dated this first day of May, 2018. And I really should have added another paragraph, and it may be a resolution all on its own. We talk about mental illness as well in terms of those individuals being locked up in our jails. And if you see and look back, when the state of Nebraska started its behavioral health reform efforts, the decline in folks being helped in mental health treatment centers declined, and our jail population inclined. You can see the lines. I mean, it's a dramatic visual. So as well as getting rid of this IMD issue, I think this Board needs to take a stand that we take a stand on decriminalizing mental illness, because that's what we've done in this society. By reducing the number of treatment beds for individuals and not giving them the proper treatment that they deserve, we are locking them up in our jails. And while we do our best that we can in a short period of time that we have these individuals with us, these folks deserve better. They deserve better as anyone who has heart disease, cancer, an orthopedic issue, a neurological issue. They have a mental illness, and it should be treated as an illness, not as a crime. And so I think we need to talk a little bit louder and a little bit longer about that issue as we move forward. But for today, this IMD issue is, again, holding back facilities to be able to increase their number of beds to provide treatment for these individuals because of it, and so we need to speak loud and clear to get rid of it. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Borges, and seconded by, I'll say Commissioner Kavanaugh, but a lot of people on this. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I want to commend Commissioner Borges for bringing this important matter to us. This is an artificial and arbitrary standard that has existed for a while and should be abolished. And I'm not aware that there is a matter before Congress now, but seeing that Commissioner Borges indicates that there is, I would urge our Douglas County Health Center Director Hartnett, who I believe is here today, yes?
Yep.
If you could come down for just a second, because we have a golden opportunity, I think. When we were all at the NACO convention in Washington earlier this year, I was able to meet with Congressman Bacon, and among other things, we discussed Medicare and Medicaid needs of Douglas County and Douglas County Health Center, urged him to come and take a tour, and I think some of you are going on a tour with him on Friday. Is that correct?
Friday is, yes. Friday at 9:00 is the tour of the Health Center with Congressman Bacon.
Perhaps that'd be a good opportunity for us to take a copy of this resolution to our congressman, who can actually do something about this, and request that he co-sponsor and support this resolution in Congress. And so I don't know, Commissioner Borges, are you going to accompany them on that? So that would be my ask. It's a little unusual that we actually get an opportunity to make a resolution, have some real impact, but this is perfect timing. So if we could make sure that he gets a copy and understands what we're doing, because he'll be right there. We can show him what we're doing.
Exactly.
Nobody does it better. So thank you, and thanks for setting up that tour.
Absolutely. Thank you for your support.
Commissioner Moore.
Excuse me, I only want to say that this is another example of kind of leadership that we have with Marianne Borges, and I have to single her out. This is paying attention to what's going on around her and reading things and becoming informed, and then bringing this important resolution to our attention. This is what I was talking about earlier, about how she's aware of what's going on, and how valuable this experience is and how it helps us. And I agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh, this is a real opportunity. I have a, excuse me, Marianne gave me some information about mental health, and, excuse me, our C, our communications officer turned it into a letter that I am going to give to Congressman Bacon. I am going to warn him about it in advance. I'm not trying to, you know, blindside him or anything. I want him to be aware of it. And so I'm going to be there Friday and give him the letter, and it deals with mental health because of the information you gave me, Marianne. So I appreciate that very much.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, you know, Mike, here's the deal, with your leadership on the correction part of what we do, that is so important, because again, those folks that I'm talking about that aren't getting treated because of the lack of beds and because of this IMD issue, they're ending up in our jails, which, again, you've taken the bull by the horns and tried to figure out ways to provide treatment for those individuals while they're in there, and we very much appreciate that. But you share the same sentiment as I do, and that is, that's not where they belong.
Right.
And so, again, how do we raise our voices, and how do we ratchet up our efforts so that they don't get in there in the first place?
Exactly.
So I thank you for continuing to trot along with us on trying to address this issue, but again, just to bring it to the forefront and to the public for discussion and awareness, I think, is first steps.
Really important. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
We'll now go to item four, which is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any Board of Commissioner-related item that is not officially listed on today's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we will go to item five in presentations, letter A, parking project at the Douglas County Health Center. Jean Hartnett, Director.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Jean Hartnett. I am the Administrator at the Douglas County Health Center, and I'm joined with John Andrews from Leo Daley and Chad Beeson, who represents the Veterans Ambulatory Development Corporation, and they're going to be presenting to you an opportunity to expand parking at the Health Center. If you've visited the Health Center recently, it's a busy place, and visitor parking as well as employee parking is tantamount to our success in inviting all constituents, families, residents, employees to our Health Center, including constituents like Don Bacon. So they are going to present to you a plan for expanded parking.
Good morning, I'm John Andrews with Leo Daley.
Chad Beeson with the VACDC.
And let me see if I can maneuver here, might need a little assistance.
Say with the VAC.
Absolutely. So it's the VA Development Corporation that we were created to help manage the new ambulatory care center that we're building down on the VA's campus.
Thank you.
And again, John Andrews, I'm with Leo Daley. Been there for a very long time, just about 39 years now. So been involved with a number of projects over the years, in fact, some work at Douglas County many years ago. So let's see if we can, if I can make this happen simply. To move forward. I need some help here. There we go. So what precipitated this is that the project that we're describing for the Veterans Administration next door is a large clinic, and in that shaded, if you will, pink area, there's a new building that's going to be constructed. And so we're displacing a number of spaces, around 250 spaces on the campus. And the VA has come up with a plan to address this. Some of them may be not quite as convenient for their staff. So we made a call and asked if there was any possibility we could potentially do something here on Douglas County Hospital's property. So we contacted Jean and talked about two distinct locations. I've labeled them as Employee Lot and Visitor's Lot. The idea of this is if we could have some temporary parking and at the same time maybe help Douglas County Hospital by having some additional long-term parking for your visitors, I thought this might be a win-win for both. So the Employee Lot on the east, if you will, there are existing 34 spaces on the north half, and on the south half, which is right here. I think you can see that. There's 25 spaces, and we looked at the potential, seeing if we could increase the overall lot to around 100 stalls. And we think we can do that. In fact, we've been doing some design to see if it's actually possible, and the answer is yes, it is possible. So we've developed this overall plan. The idea of this is that when this lot is complete, we've asked if it'd be possible for the Douglas County to allow the Veteran Administration's staff parking to take over the entire lot during the construction. Project is to be completed in the spring, summer, I should say, actually, of 2020. I don't want to misstate that. The employee, or the parking for the visitors, that lot, what we're saying is we could, in a phased approach, we could do Phase One, Phase Two, and I'm not exactly sure how we're going to address that at this point, but we'll figure that out with you all. We could add another 43 spots gained for visitor parking immediately. The idea is it would not be used for VA temporary parking. So with a trade, if you will, by doing the Employee Lot on the east and the Visitor Lot on the west, we think there's a win-win there, and that's it. That's what we're proposing to do. Can we answer any questions?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
These lots that you're closing, or this big lot that you're closing at the VA, now, how many spots are in that lot?
Roughly 650 in the lot that we're at, and we're displacing about 250, and so this is one of our efforts to provide some additional temporary parking while this is being constructed.
Okay. And then the east side lot, which is kind of over by where that jogger trail is, basically.
Yes.
That's going to have 100 new stalls, is that, did I hear that correctly?
That'll be the total number of stalls after we do the additional parking spaces.
I see. There are stalls there currently.
Correct.
How many are there now?
Somewhere between 40 and 43.
Okay, so more than double the size of that lot, right? And then this is all-new, 43. So the net gain would be just short of 100 stalls, is that right?
Correct. That'd be pretty close.
Between the two lots.
Okay. And the cost of this project?
The cost of this project would be borne by the Board, by the private fund philanthropic dollars that we're using to build the ambulatory care center. We've set aside roughly $300,000 to accommodate this effort here to help out the VA parking.
Okay. And presumably you've been working with our public property people or folks that deal with this. Okay. And then the VA, the new VA project is completed in mid-2020, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And what happens to these parking stalls after that?
We would turn those back over to you all.
Okay.
So that would be the intent, is once the construction is completed, we go away, if you will, the building and gets turned over to the VA, and this parking on your property would all turn over to yourself.
Okay. Now, the surface materials that you would use to actually build these lots are what?
Concrete, I think, is what we're working on right now.
Yes, we are.
So essentially, you're offering to build two concrete parking lots for Douglas County, use them for a couple of years, and then let Douglas County have them at no cost.
Yeah, and I want to be clear that our intention is we'd use the Employee Lot, and the Visitor Lot would be turned over to Douglas County immediately once the construction is complete.
This lot, this curved lot?
Correct.
Okay. So essentially, the exclusive use of the Employee Lot is for VA employees, but both lots would be constructed at VA cost, at your corporation's cost, and revert to Douglas County at no cost.
Correct.
Thank you. Good job.
Commissioner Borges.
Well, thank you. You know, parking is always an issue wherever we go or talk about, so this is a pretty good plan. And my questions were pretty much answered with the questions that came before. So what is your timeline, though, on this?
So design, we might have another couple of weeks to work with Jean and her team to make sure that we've addressed everything on-site, and then we'll probably go through the city planning process, make sure we get the permitting, and that could be a four-to-six week process. And then we're ready to start building right now, so.
So the lot that you're going to use right now in the back that has the 25, you said?
Somewhere between 25 and 40. We probably won't even take that over until we have the new built, so we don't want to impose upon you.
To the new one? Okay, that's what my question was.
Correct.
Was that going to come first? Which one was going to come first?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, first of all, thanks. This is a terrific, terrific plan. I have a question about the east employee parking lot. Is, first of all, I don't know if you can answer this question, but do you know where the warehouse, our warehouse is in relationship to this parking lot?
Yes, it's just down the hill a little bit. I don't know how to back this up. Maybe there's somebody who can do that, but.
It's a little bit further north, is that what you're saying?
It is. It's further north and slightly to the east.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
There you go. So it's actually right there. I think that's what you're referring to.
Oh, yeah. That's it. Great, thank you. I want to ask you, does that employee lot, and maybe I misunderstood, does that continue to be, once it's built, is it used exclusively for VA employees?
That would be our preference, if that's something, and that was kind of our give-and-take with doing the Visitor's Lot.
Okay. So do we have to have some kind of a lease or some kind of a, something in writing that, because it is county property, do we have, we're going to do that? Okay.
We have been contacted and asked about that.
Fine, that's great. Well, I'm all for it. I think this is terrific. I think I'm really pleased about what's happening at the Veterans Administration, and my brother was treated there when he came home with cancer from being an atomic veteran, died there. But, so I'm a big, I've always been supportive of veterans, the VA system, but I'm really glad this is happening now. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. My grandfather's definition of a good deal is a deal that's good for both parties. This is a good deal. I appreciate the working relationship we have had with the VA. We've done parking exchanges, actually, through the years where we've helped each other out during construction projects. This is not the first time we've worked together to address parking, but never anything on this scale, and how pleased we are to be able to work with the VA. We seek a better working relationship with them all the time, and that'll be one of the things we'll be discussing with Congressman Bacon this Friday. we'll be discussing with Congressman Bacon this Friday, this is great, thrilled to see it.
Commissioner Borg.
Could you do me one tiny, tiny favor? It's not Douglas County Hospital, it's Douglas County Health Center. We worked really hard to change that name, so if you could just change that on that slide, that would be perfect. Thank you.
No more further questions from us, thank you for the efforts, we appreciate it. Moving on to committee discussion, letter A, Finance Committee, item one is the budget report, Commissioner Boyle, Morgan, anything to report?
As presented.
Okay, we'll now go to item two, twenty-eighteen nineteen budget request, the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center Director, Sleeder.
Good morning, David Sleeder, one-four-eight-four-one Manderson Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska. Good morning, thank you for taking the time, and I apologize for not having the Deputy Director here, Kathy Allen, she yet is working on actually filling some positions right now, we're down seven, we have seven openings, and she's working on getting the interviews lined up and also some administrative deadlines that we had for bills, so, well, we'll go ahead with this, I will, I put together a packet to kind of give you a two-thousand-foot level of what our department does a little bit, because we really don't have a lot of meetings with the board and express what we're doing, and I think I'd like to project something to show that we're doing more than just answering calls and talking on the radio, because there's much more going on and we are responsible for many, many other duties, I've learned as I've been with the center. And before we start, to just let you know, this, the budget information that I've got here and presenting is my request to the board and to the City of Omaha, and it's been presented to the City of Omaha, and we have not received an answer or a response yet. So as we go through this packet here of information, please keep that in mind, that we haven't received a response yet, this is just my request to the board and the City of Omaha, okay? Okay, moving forward. Okay, of course, I think everyone is aware of the funding sources of the Emergency Communications Center, operational costs are eighty-five percent the City of Omaha and fifteen percent Douglas County. Oh, by the way, that agreement is coming due this year, in two thousand eighteen, so that inter-local agreement that established the Emergency Communications Center between the City of Omaha and Douglas County is up for renewal. Teresa has just began the initiation of that process, so, just the information background. Okay, here's our organizational chart, pretty much for information purposes. Moving on, I don't want to take a lot of time on this, this is an important slide for us, because it, you can see the hourglass there, the importance of what the Emergency Communications Center does, is basically, it's the connection point between what citizens calling in, need something, and public safety's response. If we don't do a good job, the public's not getting served efficiently, and the little box on the right, bottom right corner has a lot to say about it, the total number of calls received at the Emergency Communications Center in two thousand seventeen was eight-hundred-two-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-three, that comes down to two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-eight calls per day. Now, approximately sixty percent of it, it's not listed here, sixty percent of those are nine-one-one calls, so more than half are just nine-one-one calls, other calls are administrative or outgoing call activity. And I did a little further breakdown on it yesterday, that averages ninety-one-point-five-eight calls per hour. Now, that's twenty-four hours a day, obviously, we know that at night, the volumes for the night shifts go down and the other shifts increase, and in fact, we had, this last Saturday, because of the good weather, on the three-to-eleven shift, we received over one-thousand-and-fifty phone calls, and that was on one shift, three-to-eleven shift. And the reason I bring it up is because it's going to be reflected in my budget request here, and the total number of dispatch activities are fourteen-hundred-and-seventy per day, which comes down to roughly an average of sixty-one-point-two-five per hour. In other words, that's where we're dispatching something out, a responder to something that's going on. And there again, that varies, our night, on the night shifts, that number goes down, and the afternoon and evening shifts, they explode, so, that's just an idea, now, those are two thousand seventeen numbers, I would expect two thousand eighteen to stay on the same level. Okay, these next few slides, please bear with me, and what they're trying to depict here is some of the other things that we do, besides just take a call and dispatch it on the radio. And it really reflects on our technical services support activities of what we do at the center, we've got, our tech services take care of our computer-aided dispatch system, we'll talk about how that's shared within the whole region, there's four entities, four dispatch centers that shares that, there's the Orion Regional Public Safety Voice Radio System, in other words, for our whole region, we take care of maintaining that and making sure it operates, we have over two-thousand radios on that system right now, in other words, public safety radios within our region. There's the Regional Microwave Wide Area Network, there's a slide on it here, I'll talk about that, a picture on it, and of course, tech services maintains all the equipment within the nine-one-one center. And as, because of the volume of our center, we have to take a lot of steps to make sure that we can function all the time. We would overload another area of public safety answering point, in other words, we don't have the luxury of calling up Sarpy County, Washington County, or Potawatomi County, Iowa, and saying, hey, we've got a malfunction here, would you take it over for us? We do have the Civic Center here, backup site, which is really great, but the problem of that is it takes time to get people down there, staff it, charge it up, and run it, so our, that's why it's really important on our technical services side that we maintain twenty-four-seven operations, and the layers of redundancy, I can tell you, are multiple. So, the next slide here, we're talking about is the wide area network, this is a microwave network, so the connections are between Sarpy County, Potawatomi County, Iowa, Douglas County, nine-one-one, Washington County. This wide area network, it's a microwave system, instead of using leased fiber in the ground lines to connect everyone, we use a microwave system, it's a microwave radio that goes from tower to tower to tower that communicates, so instead of using fiber. Now, as you can see on it here, I've got a depiction here of what the, what the network does, it connects the region, all the public safety answering points, with our computer-aided dispatch system, our power nine-one-one, which is telephone system, our mobile data system for the public safety, law enforcement and fire entities in their area, and the radio, so that is all done on this wide area network, okay? It's quite complex. And the next slide, I don't want to spend a lot of time on, but there's the radio network sites, those are all tower sites that connect us to Potawatomi County, Iowa, Washington County, and that's how that, that communication is, takes place, and here's the wide area network just alone in Potawatomi County, you can see there how large of an area it covers. And if we didn't have that, we would all have, have to use leased fiber, very expensive, and you're, it's a subject of another entity to maintain, and if the, so that the fiber would go down, at least with our microwave radio system, we maintain it, we operate it, it's our network, so that's how important it is. The next slide is our radio system tower sites, kind of a small triangle there, I apologize for that, but you can see they're dispersed all over the region, and we maintain those, make sure that the tower sites are functioning, all the equipment is up, they have generators, backup power supplies, and they are all communicating, and our eight-hundred megahertz network radio frequency, and that leads us, I'll just give you a little background there, but it leads us into projects, these are projects, these are the big items I have that we're going to be asking your consideration on. The first one is what we call fire dispatchers, basically, we're asking for six additional staff members, and it takes almost six to cover one person, extra person on every shift. And why we're doing that is to, I'm sorry, should have gone on, give you a reason here, it's going to be required for the new fire station alerting, it would be helpful to have that, we don't have to have the six person, but it will help to optimize that system, it's going to be required to coordinate advanced tactical radio communications, the fire agencies and the law enforcement agencies are asking for us to do more coordination of all the different radio frequencies that are out there. And a big issue for us is our Communications Center supervisor is now required to be continuously monitoring, is actually considered a fire dispatcher for the purposes, as soon as it gets busy, which on the three-to-eleven shift is pretty much the whole time. So we then don't have a supervisor on a shift, which we have as many as fourteen to sixteen people working on a shift, with a supervisor that is then a dispatcher tied up there. For a span of control or a level of supervision, that's really unacceptable, if you consider the fact that it's an emergency situations, we aren't dealing with clerical-type decisions, we're dealing with decisions all the time of, of big public safety-type questions and decisions, where the operators and dispatchers are looking to a supervisor to say, hey, do we need to take this whole incident to another frequency, do we need to do this, and there's legitimate questions, and our supervisors are tied up right now, working a position. So, we're looking to do that, we're looking to reduce minimum staffing at overtime pay levels, we, I have staffed this additional person on every shift, pretty much since I got here, on overtime, it's voluntary overtime, which means some of the shifts get staffed and some of them don't, depend upon when the people want to work. That isn't conducive, or it has, it has been successful, in our call answering times, we have reduced our call answering times since I was, came on here as the director, but that was only by virtue of these artificial staffing on overtime. And that is, the good news is that a good portion of that overtime could be reduced if we had six additional staff members to just be plugged in each shift as that additional person I've been putting on every shift. And the big thing I'm looking at is, another big thing, is increased morale and efficiency, it is not uncommon now for people not to get lunch breaks, and their breaks to be restricted enough time to go to the bathroom and get back. And that, of course, is a morale, a real morale killer for any place. And of course, we're looking to improve our emergency medical dispatch operations, because it would give us more time to stay on the phone with people who are having medical emergencies that we coordinate now. So that's a big part of our budget request, the Omaha Police Department, the fifth precinct, they have notified us that they, they still plan to go ahead with the fifth precinct, to the best of my knowledge, anyway, but they moved it back now to the third quarter of two thousand nineteen, they were saying before the first quarter, they now have moved that back, so if and when they decide to do that, we will need another six people, because we're going to have to staff a dispatcher on the fifth precinct on every shift. So, a correction on this is the second sentence down there, it says need to have six additional staff members hired and trained by the first quarter of two thousand nineteen, that now should be third or fourth quarter, so that's moving that back, and that was news to me recently, so I apologize for not changing my powerpoint, but it's, this has all been kind of fluid on that precinct, but it's an important matter for us, because the equipment, the hardware and software in the dispatch center alone is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and we would prefer not to put that in the old center, we would like to put it in the new center, and logistically and realistically, it would work better. So that was good news for us, to move that into the fourth quarter, we're hoping, and we're not sure where, what the final answer is on that. And the next big project we have is regional microwave system, the WAN we talked about that connects all, everything in our region with our radio or computer-aided dispatch system, telephone, et cetera, all those radios within that system are coming end-of-life, and those radios alone are estimated to cost eight-hundred-seventy-five-thousand. Now, that is split four ways, because each entity in the WAN agreement pays for a portion of that, so that's split, but the split, the good news is that the tri-county Homeland Security Group has met and applied for a grant from the Homeland Security Funds to apply for that. Phil Rue from the City of Omaha has notified me and told me that that's looking very good, he has a verbal commitment on that grant going through up to at least three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand of that, so unless something changes there, but it's not official yet, so we can't actually apply it towards that, but it's looking very good, and I can say the Communications Committee, which I'm a member of on the tri-county, worked very hard to get that grant through, so that's some good news on that, if that would happen, we could reduce that by three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, and there's a chance for another one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and then divide that by four, the county exposure would definitely be reduced. Okay? A consideration that's out there, there's no cost yet, is we have to move the Orion, the radio system, main controller of that system, is now located at OPPD, historically, it's been there for a number of years, that, they have, OPPD is not going to be able to keep it there, their facility is going to be annexed or unavailable in the near future, they're thinking probably the hospital system is probably going to take over that area, so we are going to have to move that back to the Communications Center, one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth Maple, but there again, that's a shared cost by the Orion Group, so we'll see how that plays out, and I'll keep everyone abreast of that. And then, there, we are facing an upgrade, or we're going to need an upgrade to the regional nine-one-one telephone system, we call it the Viper system, but the good news is that seventy percent reimbursable from the state of Nebraska Enhanced Wireless nine-one-one surcharge. And the good news is that, that's, that's also, that regional telephone system is also shared, it's shared between Potawatomi County, Washington County, and us. Another sidelight on that is there's movement as far as Sarpy County joining us for the Orion radio system, we've already had meetings on it, the holdup is waiting for the pricing on it, and also joining our Viper telephone system, so we would have some more regionalization, another member would help split the costs and things like that. And while I'm here, before I present the final numbers, here's the, the architect's view of the new communications center, we're being told that the estimated facility available would be around January two thousand nineteen for the Fitz building for the nine-one-one center, of course, well, then it's available to us, we would have to install radio console, furniture, equipment, and all those things, so to answer the question of when we'll be moving in the building, I don't know, but the building, according to, Jeff and Jerry, are we still on for that? That, that, the plan is to have it available to us, to move our communications equipment in there around then, so, on the, and then we'll talk about the budget detail, six seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, you can see that there, the final requested budget mine is seven million four-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-two, I can tell you that if this budget request would be approved as it is, the best we can come up with the number is that the increase for our budget would be sixty-nine thousand dollars on the county side, on the county side, of course, the county pays fifteen percent of that. Of course, the county pays fifteen percent of that. And Joe, that, Kathy gave me that number, so if you're not happy with that, call her, please. And then here's the department funds as far as what's available. You can see that we get about a million dollars wireline nine one one and wireless nine, wireless nine one one, about $270,200. And then our other reimbursements are through our shared regional agreements for our WAN and our CAD and all those other things. Now, the good news is that I heard very recently that the Public Service Commission is meeting today to do a final order, a rule and order or a final order on increasing the wireless nine one one surcharge for Douglas County. Commissioner Borgensen and I met with them, them being a Public Service Commission representatives and the state nine one one director. And they had told us that they were going to do this, but we all know what that means, pie in the sky. But the good news is that they, the rule and the order they expect to issue today is that all the public safety answering points in the state would receive a one percent increase in wireless nine one one funding, except for Douglas County. Douglas County would receive a fourteen percent increase, which would really roughly be $56,000. That's good news. But the better news is a lot, that's a short-term solution, one year. And there's a reason for that, why they're doing a short term. But they already, today, they also are going to cement in place that they're going to have a workshop to change the funding methodology for wireless nine one one in our state. They couldn't get it done in time for their fiscal year budget this year. So that's why they're coming up with a one-time, one-year budget increase. One percent for everybody else, except for Douglas County's fourteen percent. And that's long overdue as far as being the inequity of the wireless funding. The good news is the funding workshop will be on June thirteenth. We've been told, I think it was nine o'clock, I saw this morning. And I would sure welcome anybody that's interested, the commissioners, let me know who wants to go. I definitely want to go. They want our input. The nine one one director called and said that, what was, updated me on what was going on, but to make sure we get our representatives there. They are going to change the nine one one SAM model. That was the way they reimbursed. It was a model based upon all kinds of things, but it's outdated because it uses two thousand census data. It was a regressive formula by, according to population, for us. So anyway, they're throwing the SAM model out. They want input as to what would be fair and equitable. But I think they, they understand that it hasn't been fair for quite some time. So that's some, at least there's some good news on the wireless nine one one funds. The wireline nine one one, I think it's going to stay pretty close to that because VoIP, Voice Over IP nine one one, that is kind of filling the, the void or the vacuum that was left from people that were moving off of landline phones. It seems like the landline phones are kind of bottoming out the numbers. But the VoIP, VoIP over, Voice Over Internet protocols is what it is. But that type of nine one one where you use your computer to dial nine one one, that seems to be growing somewhat. But anyway, I think we're gonna hold the wireline nine one one revenues pretty close to what they are in the next couple of years. And hopefully wireless will go up. It definitely will go up by $56,000 if that order is passed today at the Public Service Commission. So there's some good news there. And, and I really think that wireless nine one one funding, if we can go up there and express our needs and the inequities of it in the past, that we have a good chance. And I mean, they seem to be coming through a little bit on what they said, so. With that, I don't wanna take up any more of your time. Do you have any other questions for me on my, on the budget request? But be, please keep in mind that we have not received an answer from the city of Omaha on this request yet, for sure.
Okay, you have a lot of people in queue, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Boy.
Thank you. Thanks for this, great report.
You're welcome.
We're, of course, excited about the move of nine one one from your old headquarters into your new public safety bond financed new headquarters. You and I have toured that and I'd like to go through it with you again. I know that Public Property has overseen the project so that the timeline that you're talking about sounds, sounds like it's on time.
Okay.
Just a few questions relative to the information that you gave us. The new headquarters that you and I have seen, you're saying, okay, it'll be available for us in January 2019, but then we have to basically furnish it. It's like the house will be done, but then we have to get moved in. And relative to that, anticipating that, you have looked out for the furnishings, whatever, that you're gonna need to move in at that time, I presume, is that right?
Right, we're, we're just completing our request for proposal now for the console furniture and the dispatch positions.
Okay.
There will be twenty-five positions in there between operators and dispatcher positions, yes. We've, we've got that near the end. We're just waiting for the, the final information on the electrical design and just a couple of items there. And then we should be ready to get that down to purchasing for submission.
What, in a month or a week or?
How, I can't tell you when the final electrical are available. But as soon as they're available, we should be able to get it out. I don't know how long purchasing takes, but on our side, we'll be able to submit it to purchasing.
Okay. And based on the tour that you and I did, and I don't know if you've been over there again, it looks like the format that they're laying out on that, on that floor is, is what you want, is that correct?
Yes, yes. It should be a definitely better facility than what we have now.
Great. That would allow you the space for these additional staff FTE people that you're talking about, correct?
Yes, yes.
Cause you're pretty-
And into the future, there are extra-
Expansion into the future?
Yes.
Okay. Because you're pretty crowded where you're at right now, right?
Very, very.
Okay. The number of staff that you currently have, and I think you might have indicated in here, do you know off the top of your head the, the number of FTEs that you, that you currently, in your current location have?
Yes, our available staff is seventy-eight, it's, it's to include all the staff members. We have seven openings right now.
Okay, so you currently have seventy-eight. Are you authorized for those additional seven openings that you're, you're talking about?
But the openings we have now, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we're trying to fill them right now.
Okay, so you got seventy-eight of an authorized like eighty-three, something like that, is that?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Just roughly speaking.
Roughly, yes.
Okay. We have talked before that, and I thought it was the PSC, some state organization which had a proposal to assume all the duties of local nine one one operations like ours and make it a statewide operation. Where is that?
Yeah, my understanding is with the next generation nine one legislation, which is the latest is, there is not going to be any forced mergers. There's, will be encouragement for regionalization by virtue of the next generation ESI net or the network that they're putting in place. But there's decisions on staffing, policies and procedures and things that will remain with the local entity. The state will provide assistance, I guess, or guidelines on training, standards and things like that. But the local decisions on nine one one communications is gonna reside with the local counties and cities.
Okay. Relative to your ask here today, as near as I can determine, the immediate thing that you're asking for in, in this budget, which I guess would be the eighteen, nineteen budget, is six additional FTEs, one per shift to help on the, on the new fire alert system, is that correct?
That's correct, but it was, it's more than fire alerting. This person also would assist with answering calls.
Okay.
Doing some more of the operator assistance also. Our call volumes are, are large. And we need to have available staff to keep those answering times down, if at all possible.
Okay. And that, six FTEs would be in addition to that authorized level that we talked about a minute ago, that eighty-three or whatever it is, is that right?
Yes.
So you'd be going to an authorized level of somewhere around ninety, is that, is that right?
It would, it would be approximately that, yes.
Okay. Of that six, the budget's out of it, I think you estimated $274,000. That's currently subject to that eighty-five fifteen Omaha Douglas County split, is that right?
Yeah.
So of that two hundred and seventy-four ask, currently under that split, our portion is like sixty, sorry, forty-one thousand. Forty-one thousand, according to my math major.
Yeah. I'm not sure other than, and I would hate to get down to the dollars, but I was advised by our deputy director that this morning, that it would, the county's responsibility would be $69,000 if we added those six positions. I, you know, I, I can't debate the math right here.
Joe?
And I think what, what Kathy adds in is the fringe cost, which is thirty-five percent.
Yes.
So if you add that to the salaries and take the fifteen percent, I bet you get pretty close to it.
Yeah, that's what we were, were thinking there. She wanted to make sure that you understood the total so that we don't, later on, somebody said, well, you told us X, and what about this? The full impact would be approximately $69,000.
Okay. So if I understand it, and the way that we've done this, and the finance committee has, has called for people who have exceeded the, you know, directions of the finance director, you've exceeded them essentially for cost to us under this eighty-five fifteen system by that $69,000. That's, that's the ask for this fiscal year, is that right?
Right.
Okay. So the additional police precinct, which would be another two hundred and seventy-four, is a future, future thing, but you were giving us a heads up on it. And the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand is a WAN radio. That's a future thing as well, is that right?
That's a future, it'll be a near future. But I think with, we're waiting on that, on the grant funding to see what the impact will be on us.
Okay. Now, one of the things that you also mentioned was an upgrade of the nine one one phone system itself. Isn't, isn't that part of what we're doing under the public safety bond is we're upgrading our?
No, no, that would be a separate, that's an equipment upgrade that's required. And it's just mostly software. It hasn't been upgraded for some time and it needs to be, but that is separate from the public safety bond of project.
But that's not net right now either, that's in, in the future too?
Uh, next year or so, we're hoping to do that. But there, there again, keep in mind that that's seventy percent eligible for wireless nine one one reimbursement. In other words, seventy percent of that should go away. And we also, if we would add another member to the Viper system, that would help reduce that. And that is also divided by three.
Okay.
So if you take that total, if we got a three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar grant, divided by three, seventy percent eligible, it kinda, that's, that's what we're looking at there.
Okay, but we're not talking about that in this budget today?
No, no.
So the membership of Viper and the membership of Orion are different? The different memberships?
It's a lot of the same, but it's not exactly the same. The wide area network, everyone really in our region but Sharpie. The computer aided dispatch system, pretty much all the public safety answering points. The telephone system, like I said, doesn't include Sharpie. The computer aided dispatch system includes everyone except Potawatomi. So it's kind of, each one is unique, each interlocal is unique.
Okay. But the, you're talking about bringing in a new Viper member, is that right?
That's possible, yes.
And they're also, they're already a member in this other initiative?
They're already a member in the wide area network and the computer aided dispatch sharing. But they, and, and they were not the radio or the, the telephone system. Talks are underway now to, to consider both of those.
Okay. Now, can finally, this PSC order that you're talking about, and I think that relates to wireless rather than wireline, is that right?
That's correct, it would be wireless.
And we've all been down this. I, I can remember when this was established. I have an uncle on the PSC board, Mike had a wife on a PSC board. It's been going on for a long time in terms of, we're not getting our fair share. Of, is it the wireless split or the wireline split or both?
It's both. In my, in my opinion, it's both. The, we're the only entity in the state on the landline, we'll call it landline side, that has that restriction of down to the fifty cents.
Okay.
And we're the only entity in the whole state. Other places in the state can set that all the way up to a dollar. That could increase, increase our revenue up to a million dollars a year if we could go up to the level that any other PSC in the state can do. That's one issue. On the wireless side, that SAM formula, that was there before, the funding formula, did not take into account populations and other essential things that we are different. And our percentages from that wireless nine one one fund statewide were below comparable in any other place. It was almost as if Douglas County was, I don't know. I don't even wanna comment on it, but it was severely out of proportion of what it would be fair and equitable by population.
Right, and, and we've had this discussion, I mean, this goes way back, long before I was ever on this board, where the state's statute set up that, that inequitable distribution formula. And we've attempted to change it over and over and over again. Just so I'm clear and so that the people watching are clear. That's for wireless or wireline distribution?
That's wireless.
Okay. So the proportion that the Public Service Commission you say is meeting on today is for wireless or wireline distribution?
Wireless.
So it's the same thing?
The wireless portion, yeah. The, the landline is a separate issue. And that's gonna take legislature to pass and change the law, which allows the surcharge for landline to go up from fifty cents to a dollar.
But they have discretion without a change of the law to change the distribution formula on wireless distribution?
My understanding is that the Public Service Commission can change the wireless nine one one funding at any time. And my information is that today, they're doing it on a one-year, short-term basis. But they're meeting June thirteenth to discuss changing it on a permanent basis.
And that's great.
And they do not wanna follow the same funding model that currently exists. So to me, I'm optimistic, I'll wait to see what really happens. But I am surprised, I'm very gratified to see them doing the one-year increase. It's a good start, it's an acknowledgement that an inequity is there.
And that's great news. My final question, if you don't know, you don't know, is it seems to me that phone communication is moving away from wireline and towards wireless in a big way. I mean, I know lots and lots of people who no longer have a wireline to their home. It's all wireless. So is that true? I mean, are there more wireless communication devices than wireline?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. It's, it's rapidly moving over to the wireless. But it's kind of stabilizing a little bit. On the people that have landline phones now are kind of keeping those. Businesses have them, they rely on them, they like that. And they need the phone anyway for other things.
Okay.
So I think we're at the bottom there, but the wireless devices, that's- So I think we're at the bottom there, but the wireless devices, that's just going to keep going up.
Okay. But the wire line devices must have a higher, uh, fee charge or something than the wireless devices? Because if there are more wireless devices, it would seem to me, and they had the same charge, you know, whatever the fee is.
Well, what I, what I saw, Commissioner, is a lot of people have, went to wireless devices because they elected to, and the landline phones, uh, are a redundancy, and they don't wanna pay for their landline phones. When they have a wireless phone, they will do the same thing.
Right.
My problem with that is, and I'm gonna give an, a, a opinion here, is with a landline phone, we never lost one. Not one ever. In other words, basically at locations, we had no, hardly any problems locating someone on a landline phone calling nine-one-one. Wireless phones, we do. And now hopefully that will get better in the future, you're talking about it. But there is definite advantages to having a landline nine-one-one phone. If my significant other was on the phone having an emergency, I would want him on a landline phone.
I see.
Uh, they don't cut out, very rarely. They're very, very stable, and that was the backbone of the industry. But yes, people, it's a redundancy to your wireless phone. A lot of people feel it. I keep, in my home, I keep both.
Yeah.
As, to me, it's the, the cheapest security system I could ever have for someone having an emergency at my home. But, um, you know, a lot of people don't want to incur that extra cost.
So as we make this transfer from our old nine-one-one headquarters into the, the new Public Safety Bond-funded nine-one-one headquarters, using this new technology and, you know, G I, G I S upgrades and everything else, and these new, uh, wireless, uh, capacities, we're gonna have a better capacity to get quick responses. Is that correct?
That's a leading question.
Yeah.
Our biggest problem is two things. Being able to handle the capacity of wireless callers. Here's the situation. When an accident happens on the interstate, we get hundreds or fifty calls all at once. Now, that's a wonderful ability to do that, but being able to coordinate and handle that and get them answered in timely manners is an issue. The other issue is location technology. The location technology for wireless right now is not at the same level as landline. So they're working on that, and they're working on workarounds, but with every advancement, there always are some limitations. So I would welcome, the new center will be able to handle all this technology, and in fact, the new center in the, by twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we're probably gonna be taking next generation nine-one-one calls. Kinda scary. That's text, uh, we're already taking text nine-one-one, but video, photographs, images are gonna be coming into the nine-one-one center on a screen and say, "Here you go. People are dial, gonna dial nine-one-one, and they're gonna take your phone, and they're gonna show you what's going on." Um, it's, it's going to be complex, the way we handle that, because what if, uh, first of all, are we, are, are we, we still will have the location problems. Some of these calls, we're not gonna know what they are. We're not gonna know what we're seeing. Maybe someone takes in a bar or restaurant and just starts photographing, and we get that. What do we, what are we seeing? What is a, is it a, is a, is there a legal issue? Is there a fire issue? Is it a public safety health issue? Um, we're not sure. I think it could slow down your responses, because the operators or call takers are gonna have to view that maybe some length of time and go, "What am I seeing here?" They're gonna have to rebid this for locations and things like that. As comparing to now with the voice, as soon as we can hear your voice, you tell us, confirm where you are, if we don't have that, and what's going on. We're probably already have police, fire, or rescue already going, as soon as we have a location. Well, when we see that next generation video come in, it, um, it's gonna be challenging. Uh, it's wonderful technology, it's way, the way it is going, but, um, it's gonna be challenging for us to, um, coordinate that.
So every generation-
There's gonna be good and bad.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, you know, every generation of technological upgrades are gonna require, require us to respond. Those are the challenges, I mean, they're just inevitable. And, and that's what we do continually. That's what you're doing continually.
Right.
And so-
Trying to stay, um, responsive, yes.
Believe me, I have the same problem. I, I do this every year or so, and it, it, it's a challenge for all of us. But, uh, thanks for this. Very good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, uh, when did you say, how, how long after the building is ready for occupancy will it take us to become live there?
We're estimating a quarter of a year. If, that's if we have the RFP, we should have. For the equipment ready to go, there'll be cabling, a lot of cabling. They'll be putting the furniture in, establishing it. They will be establishing the offices, running the fiber and things like that. We're hoping to have it done in a quarter.
Okay. Um, when was the last time you used the nine-one-one center in the basement as a backup?
We use it for every training class when we hire new people. We use that, get the people operating it, and at least once a year, we will send an entire shift down to the civic center. But the backup site also, the good news is that we have an interlocal agreement with, with the other entities, Washington, Potawatomi County, Illinois, Iowa, and, um, Sarpy County. They all go down there and train on it. So it's being exercised.
Right.
All during the year.
Very good. Uh, the microwave system, tower to tower, is there any concern about weather with micro waves like that?
We've had very good reliability with it, and because the system has three different routings, if a tower goes down, we come at it from a different tower.
Okay.
So.
And, um, I think that's all I, oh, I might have one more.
Sure.
Um, you said you're gonna have twenty-five consoles in the new facility. How many consoles do we currently have? I knew I could-
Talking of eighteen?
Eighteen, okay.
Yes. Eighteen operational?
Thank you.
Good question.
Uh, Commissioner Boyle, if you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, if, if on this five-year staffing plan you had, you could've put in the number of calls per year, that could've been eye-opening.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, first, I wanna say that, uh, this is an excellent presentation that you put together.
Thank you.
Very readable, very understandable, although it's very complex. I'm not saying I don't understand it, but you've done a terrific job in speaking, uh, at least in language that I understand pretty well, so I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
You're doing a terrific job on all fronts. Um, I wanted to ask about the pay. Uh, we went through a, a lot of turmoil with pay for corrections. Are we competitive? Apparently we must be with hiring the staff at your facility.
I believe we're competitive in the area.
Okay, good. Uh, what about voluntary overtime? Um, is there, do you have a cost on what the overtime is? That's because of the shortage of staff, isn't it?
Right. I have an estimate for next year.
Okay.
Of what, with our voluntary overtime at three hundred and approximately forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Thanks. Okay. And, um, uh, at corrections, we talked about, there's a union prohibition in the contract of part-time people. I mean, there's talk that, uh, some, some people that are in their thirties and forties don't wanna be, you know, tied down to things. Have you given any thought to anything like that?
Yes, we have, and we've actually pursued people, maybe that have retired and, and tried. The interest is not there, for the most part, on people retired. They wanna get out, they're done. The, the hard part is getting your part-timers trained.
Yeah.
We've got nine to twelve weeks of training you'd have to give them.
Okay.
And then are they available for the part-time that you want? A lot of times it's a night shift or on short notice, so we have to worry about that. And, um, and then keeping the people trained.
Yeah.
If they don't work on a regular basis, there's a lot of stuff in the computer aided dispatch system that you, they forget to do or don't do. Um, it's just a little, it's, it's difficult. But we have attempted in the past to try to get people who have retired and have those skills already there to see if there's interest, and, uh, we did get, um, a person that was retired to come back and assist with quality assurance.
Okay, good.
So on a part-time basis.
Okay. Well, you're on top of it. I, I just was curious about that.
I wish it would work for us.
Right. Uh, on the Omaha Police Department, fifth precinct, the software purchase is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That, that's their deal. We don't share the cost of that, do we?
Yes, we would. That's part of our overall cost.
Software. So we pay eighty-five percent of that?
Yep, to include the, the dispatch hardware and software to do that.
Okay. Um, I guess, you know, and the comment I'd like to make about the fifty cents on, where a dollar thing, the thing that I've discovered, and I, and I think this is correct, is that oddly enough, the fifty percent is probably a blessing to us, because the dollar would, while it would raise a dollar in Douglas County, um, what would happen is, just like the fifty cents that's raised here, uh, it doesn't come home. It goes somewhere else. And so we're paying, I understand, if I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but I understand that that additional money would be going to someplace else out in the state, not necessarily back here to us. Is that what you understand?
My understanding would come all back to us, just like our landline is now. If it went up to fifty cents to a dollar, that it would double our revenue. I, that's what I've been told by the Public Service Commission.
Okay, well, I think under some conditions it might, but presently I don't think it does, 'cause we've supported this.
I could be wrong.
Oh, I, I could be wrong too. We'll have to check into it, but I do know that, uh, Commissioner Rose has been incredibly aggressive on this, and she, uh, uh, my wife, uh, I thought was aggressive from, believe me, I know that she can be when it comes to these issues. Uh, I mean, about everything. I mean, excuse me, Ann, I didn't mean that. Uh, anyway. But, uh, Crystal already takes the cake for it. She has really put her foot down and has said, "We're not going along with this," and she's forced these issues, so we really owe her, um, a great deal of gratitude for doing that. Um, I'm really interested in this workshop on the thirteenth, and, um, uh, looking forward to that. Um, I guess that's really, uh, you know, I, I'm really curious about this, and this is probably something that will draw laughter from anybody who has a, knows how to operate a computer, but, you know, we talk about this next generation, all this video and all this stuff coming in. Is there any way we can, um, not accept it? I mean, I could just see somebody in a bar with a thing doing this, and, I mean, you know, a fistfight's going on, and so they're filming it and sending it to nine-one-one. I mean, really, uh, I, I don't know that that, uh, you know, the use of this kind of, that, uh, you know, sending that to us is really pretty, pretty overbearing and really unnecessary. Just, you know, give us a call and say, "There's a big brawl, and somebody's getting his head beat in." Thank you, we'll send somebody. We don't need pictures. Is there any way we can say, "We don't do video"?
No. Not, my understanding is no, and the expectation from the public is that we will, and I think that you'd have a problem that if you said no, but, um, I can tell you, we're not gonna be the first in the state to do the next generation nine-one-one, um, to the best of my, uh, knowledge, and that's, a lot of it is so that we understand it better. We can have another public safety answering point, try it and develop it, and hopefully there'll be some kind of control of it. But I'm afraid, um, when the word gets out that, that it's fine and we can accept it and stuff like that, we'll get more, because that's just how our society communicates now. But I, I, I'm hearing you. I see it as a, a large threat. I'm hoping I'm not coming back to you in two, three years and saying, "Guess what? Because of these wireless calls now, taking so much longer, we've now tying our operators up on these, we need six more."
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just, I'm afraid that's where it's headed.
Yeah. Well, maybe there's some way to divert those, those calls to a, you know, one person or something, let them stack up. I'm sorry, but I just don't have any, I don't think it's necessarily video, and that's my opinion. Uh, I really, you've really done a great job with the presentation, and I wanna ask Joe, I told him I was gonna do this, a little warning, but, uh, Joe, what do you think about the request? I mean, it seems to be pretty sensible to me. What's your take?
Um, certainly, you know, as Dave's gone through it, you can see what's driving it, but when you come back to the, the fiscal ramifications, it, uh, is, uh, just under a ten percent increase in their budget, and, uh, you know, approximately six hundred thousand dollars increment to the budget, and, you know, from the county side, given the, uh, eighty-five fifteen split, uh, it's, uh, something we could probably work with, but from the city side, where they're paying eighty-five percent of it, uh, I had a discussion yesterday with Steve Curtis, uh, my counterpart in the city, and, uh, he understands a lot of the issues, but he would like to have, uh, another meeting with Dave and I and himself, and, uh, just really take a good look and see, uh, you know, where we are on this and, and where, at what point he would feel comfortable with it. So I, I think, you know, Dave's done a really good job at presenting what's driving this, but, you know, everybody has budget guidelines, and so you're, you're trying to reconcile the two, and I think that's what we still have to do.
I appreciate that, and I agree with it. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm curious about, I think we have about eighty thousand people in Douglas County that are not residents of Bennington, Waterloo, uh, wherever, Omaha and all that. Of course, they're spread out, you guys wouldn't know pocket, but I wonder, uh, whether, in the course of all this discussion, whether we ought to be talking about, um, you know, ninety-five-five or something. I wonder whether that, uh, that whole thing has changed, where the calls are coming from the city, not from these, uh, islands that are in, still in the county. Uh, I don't wanna rock the boat, but eighty-five fifteen doesn't seem, um, appropriate anymore. Uh, as long as we're jumping on the bed, maybe we should ask about that as well. Uh, David, I wanna thank you for a very professional, uh, presentation. Uh, all I can say is that I'm, I'm just so pleased that you are in charge of that facility. Uh, I just, I feel totally confident in, uh, what you do and what you say, so I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you from the support from all the commissioners. I've had really good support from the commissioners, and I'm not trying to butter anybody up, um, that you listen.
Go ahead.
But I, but I, I've, I've, um, come to the conclusion that you listen, and that's all we ask as department heads, is that you'll just listen to our reasoning, and hopefully it'll work out, so.
It will. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you, everyone.
You, no, 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 you, you have more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought I, I-
Okay.
Thought I was in charge.
Sure.
But, uh, before, before I go to Commissioner, uh, Do the Next, then Commissioner Works, and then Commissioner Kraft, then Commissioner Morgan. So you just know what you got.
Great. I, I don't get an opportunity to speak to everyone here very often.
I just know for the record that, to your point, you know, uh, I don't know what the city does, because quite frankly, since the agreement was put in place, they, they've annexed more land.
Oh, yeah.
And the census changed, so if you were to open that up, it's a whole nother deal. Right now, if they pay you what they had, they, they get a lower deal, so, uh, Commissioner Do.
Thank you. Uh, I have a quick question and a comment. I, I don't mean to belabor all this too long. My, my question on the budget. You said the six new dispatchers, and incidentally, we were talking about these dispatchers a year ago. I mean, this is not new. A year ago, we said, "We're gonna try to do this next year. We know you need them. Your overtime has gone up because we didn't do it a year ago." So we, we have kind of informally committed to, to, to trying to make this happen. How the city responds, of course, is a pretty key factor, but, uh, but my question for you is, if we add these six new dispatchers, is there any offset in the budget from reduced overtime?
Yes.
Okay, that's already taken in?
Yes.
All right. Well, that was a quick question.
Um, wait a minute. Yes, yes. We offset a lot of that. A lot of the overtime that we had from the past year would be offset with the six people.
Thank you.
And, and you're right. Um, I did ask for those people last year.
Oh, yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time, and on the fire service end of things, there, there is an expectation, uh, that this is coming, uh, everybody.
Yeah.
And that, that's my, my comment. I would, I would touch on that. Having the privilege of, uh, kinda being on both sides of the phone on this, of, of being a volunteer firefighter, um, wasn't that long ago that we couldn't talk to each other. Last night, there was a wildfire in Dodge Park that quickly, we started fighting it while it was still in Dodge Park, very wind-driven, uh, ended up coming quickly over onto our farm. We had Fort Calhoun, Omaha, Pocahontas, Irvington, ten fire trucks in our woods. I mean, it was, it was pretty chaotic. Uh, and incidentally, the fire is still burning. It's the first fire I've ever seen us give up on. It took a wind shift this morning to stop the fire. That's the only thing that stopped the fire. And it was kind of odd too, because Omaha was, it was Omaha's fire up on our farm. You know, they were in charge because it started in Omaha before it got up there. But years back, we couldn't have, we would not have been able to talk to Omaha. I mean, not only was there poor communications when we had two different nine-one-one centers, but we couldn't talk to each other. And here we are, working together and talking together. You know, Fort Calhoun, every, you know, we can all talk to each other. We have made tremendous progress in, in improving the communications here, and, uh, it's nice to see that happening, and I hope we can keep, keep it going.
Uh, I can tell you, it's coming from outside the area. From, coming from where I come from, the regional communications capabilities here are much better, are much better, and that, that makes me feel really a lot better. And it also helps the communication center, because when you can't talk directly back and forth, then it all has to go through a dispatcher who's trying to relay this information between agencies that can't talk to each other. And it, it really fits into the federal government's, um, push the last few years of interoperability. And, um, yeah, that is, I think it's one of our bright spots in our region, and I'll speak to the region, that, uh, anything that can happen, we can even go out another state, um, and talk well into Potawatomi County, just, just like nothing. And that is not common. well into Potawatomi County, just, just like nothing, and that is not common in a larger, a large metropolitan areas in our, in our country. I'm coming back from a, coming from a county where we had a state line there, that was it, you would think that was the Berlin Wall for communication with fire and police, we had to relay to a dispatch center, to a dispatch center, to a car, a squad car, to talk, so you're right, and I think that is a key to what we're doing, we're definitely moving in the right direction in the, the regional concept of communications, it, it is more a god, it's a godsend to the users out there, the police and fire, but it's also very helpful to us, because we don't have to relay all that information, that takes time, this thing gets missed, and, and it's, it's a lot better way to do it, I, I can't speak any higher on the, on the Orion radio system that we have here, it's really, really, really well done, so, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Claire, our thoughts are with you on that, Commissioner Rogers and I sit in many meetings with folks across the country with wildfires going on, the Californias, the Oklahomas, the Hawaiis, I mean, those are actually most current ones, and we know how devastating they can be, so we wish you luck on that. I too is going to bring up the renegotiating of the contract, I mean, this is one of those things, you want to annex, then you provide the services and pay for the services, so I think we definitely need to at least have that conversation. The landline money that we get, Commissioner Duda and I were talking when that question came up, is that that money stays here, and one of the things that we do, it's kind of one of those balance things, that if we push and to continue to increase that surcharge, I think we will see an increase of folks dropping off, paying for their landlines, so, you know, we just have to be aware of that and, and be sure we balance that. And before I forget, I want to thank, as Commissioner Duda did, not only Crystal Rhodes from the PSC, but Tim Schram, and also Dave Sankey, I mean, they took the time to meet with us and hear what our concerns were, we were kind of the holdup for things moving forward, and, and they heard us, and again, it's a one-year fix, but we're happy that they listened and will take it, and they have promised that they will, at that June thirteenth, have that conversation again about more of the long-term and what the formula is, so I have to give them kudos for really paying attention to what our concerns were when we met with them. The, the only thing I want to, not that you don't have enough on your plate, and you've done a tremendous job coming on as our new director, and we kind of threw you into the fire when I asked you to join that committee with me, with the state system, but you've done a tremendous job on that, but one of the things that I think we still need to talk about are the mental health calls that we get. I know we're doing some CIT training with our dispatchers, when those trainings occur, I know that it's a lot of time, but again, across the country, we're saying that that's really important, and we started it, but I think we have to maybe ratchet it up a little bit, and so if that needs to be figured or talked about in the budget process, I think we need to. At one time, and we still do this, but, you know, there's kind of this soft hand call handoff, but I think we could really maybe improve that a little bit, and to the point where we should talk about having some type of a mental health professional that is also in our nine-one-one center, and so those, I know there's a lot of calls that come in on that subject, I know there's a lot of time spent on those calls, and God bless them for doing that, and being patient and caring and compassionate to them, but I think that maybe we can have a conversation to see if maybe we could ratchet up what we need in the nine-one-one center to handle those calls.
And, and you're right, we definitely get those type of calls, and I guess we would look at anything, we'd be very open to anything we could provide for training for our people, someone that is a professional or something like that, but we definitely, we're interacting with those people on the front end.
Yep.
And we would be open to talking about any kind of training or anything we could do, for sure.
Okay, great.
If anything, it would help us.
Right, exactly, exactly.
It would help everyone, really.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
I'll start off with just a quick comment, I read somewhere, or was at a seminar where they were talking about burnout with dispatchers, are we experiencing that?
Is there staff turnover because of burnout?
I think as the volumes go up without having the, the necessary staff, we're very susceptible to that, we've had a number of repeat, people retire at the, two or three retired at the end of the year, and I think part of that could have been burnout, so yes, I, I guess I'm very worried about it, the staff that we do have, if we don't get some additional help and relieve some of that, we're going to have that, and do I see signs of it? Yes.
Are any of the nine-one-one centers around the country going to six-hour, thirty-week, thirty-hour-a-week workdays, thirty-hour-a-week, six-hour workdays?
I think that, that a lot of them would like to, but they don't have the ability to do that, but it's, there's, there's schedules all over the place out there, there's twelve-hour days, ten-hour days, different days off a week, but I have not seen the, any research on it that one is really better than the other, so far, it's, it's, it's just been a, kind of like a local decision, what fits the union members the best, kind of get their input and see what they think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Dave, what Mike said and some others about your service, you are really a gift to us, you do a thorough excellent job, and we've had some other experiences that weren't too excellent, so I want you to know, that's where we're coming from.
Thank you.
Now, when you make that presentation to the city, have you made it yet to show them what looks like the need so far, one meeting or something with your information?
I've had an informal meeting with the mayor, the finance director, and, and Joe has had some other communications outside of that, but there has been a discussion that, would I be available to present at the, the City of Omaha City Council or a committee? And I said, "By all means, yes," and that's one of the reasons this presentation is designed like it is, because many times I'm finding out they don't have, or don't, or don't have a lot of experience and understanding of what the communication center really does, besides just take a call and talk on the radio, there's a lot more to it, on the technical side, training side, et cetera, so my hope was that I could actually meet with a committee and show them or tell them what we do, and maybe they would understand the need better. So, last I heard, Commissioner, was that they were going to consider me putting a presentation like this on at their city council?
Council.
Or a committee meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I talked to Ben Gray, who's the president of the city council, and maybe talked to him about liking to make a presentation on nine-one-one, and then we need to get the work on some of the things you said, Mary Ann, and start to look at this a little bit more, and meet with you in the near future, maybe not necessarily at our board meeting, but at least three of us talking to you about some other ideas too.
Sure, absolutely, I will.
That'd be great, and I really, again, most earnestly, thank you for your work and professionalism.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, and like I say, I've, I've, I like the fact that at least people listen.
Well, it's such an important job, I mean, nine-one-one is just invaluable.
Sure, but it's actually the first link, the one people have, have help, want help, that's where they're calling, so.
That's right.
We have to do a good job.
And you've seen it in other cities and communities where they've had that breakdown, and we want to be certain we're doing everything we can for our service to be the best, and I think with you, that's the only way it will be.
Good, yeah, it, it's, it's a priority.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and actually, you brought up the best point to end this, and that is, is that you are the first contact, and a lot of times, folks forget about that background activity happening, but that triggers everything, and so, again, thank you, this, this was probably the most, since I've been here, one of the most beneficial presentations from our nine-one-one department, and so I thank you for that.
I thank you, I was hoping it wasn't too much, but to kind of give you an overview, it's the priorities, and I can tell you, when you listen to some of the tapes of these calls of people calling in, and what their problems and needs are, it's, it's not something that can be taken lightly or taken unprofessionally, if you just hear the cries that people are looking for help, that we're there, and if we don't do a good job, and we can't take the time to do a good job with these people on the phones, whatever, they don't get the kind of help they need. All these police fire and rescue equipment and personnel we have out there, if we do a poor job, they, they cannot, in some cases, do a good job, and that's the importance of this, I can't stress it enough, that we are not out in the forefront, you're exactly right, Commissioner, out there responding and doing all those wonderful things, but if we don't do a good job on our end and can't take the time with people to listen to them and get the information that the responders need, we're not doing a good service.
Hold on to, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, you know, people are willing to pay nineteen ninety-five to twenty-nine ninety-five a month for the help I fall and can't get out button, but they don't want to pay an extra nineteen ninety-five a month in their taxes.
Absolutely.
Or even an extra dollar in their taxes, so there's kind of a confliction there, and you are, as we said, the first link between the help I fall and button and the responders.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dave, Commissioner Warks made up a point I didn't, are you gonna, can you start separating those in the user group meeting, the, the calls that just come from mental health, because I'm assuming they're, they're mixed up and a whole lot of stuff, but I didn't, I didn't know there was some distinctions there, I'd like to see that.
There, yeah, we could try, we can try doing that, and that's something that I was looking at, trying to do anyway, researching that by the nature code, when the call, or the operators take the call, they have to assign it a nature, in other words, what is this type, and that's a type I can look into on the nature code, but yeah, it's a nine-one-one, it would be interesting.
That's, yeah, that speaks a whole nother deal.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to rearrange the item E and move that up with the Criminal Justice Committee, and item one is the United Way of the Midlands Court Referral Community Service Program, Commissioner Wolk.
Okay.
All set?
You're done.
You all set?
Okay.
Thanks a lot, David, we'll be in touch. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, the United Way has a contract with us that is really, in my opinion, has really delivered for us, it is a diversion program that the judges are relatively cooperative in referring people to United Way so that they do not end up in the correction facility, and that in a nutshell is, is what they do for us, and they have proposed a slight increase, which is very reasonable, I believe, in the work that they do for us, and there also is a component of, there's a fee that has to be paid, and we, in the past, have decided that we're willing to pay that fee, because it prevents us a low, low charge for people staying out of the correction facility, so I'll go ahead and let you two make your presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely, good morning, my name is Lori Elkins, I am with United Way of the Midlands, our address is twenty-two zero one, Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-two.
Good morning, Justin Dockerty, United Way.
As Mr. Mike Boal had mentioned, just kind of recap just a little bit for individuals in the room that is not familiar with the CR CSP program, United Way has partnership with Douglas County for about forty years, and in this partnership, we have served individuals that have been on probation for an outline of either misdemeanor or felony charges, part of their probation outline is going to be to do community service, if they're outlined to do community service, they will come to United Way and then we place them in a nonprofit agencies to complete those hours. During that process, about a year ago, we had a meeting at a court referral community service meeting, that an individual, Amber Redman, had brought up about partnering, partnering up with Douglas County as they have individuals that go through the offender work program to assist them in possibly providing different opportunities for them, instead of just picking up trash and things of that network, since the individuals that we place to do community service is at a nonprofit agencies, they may be able to pick up a skill set level, they may be able to pick up a trade and have an option to work on the nights in the, in the weekends to complete whatever hours that they may have to complete. Based off the information that we have presented, we are asking for an increase of fifteen percent from our original agreement, which was two years ago, based off these fees, we are asking for, based off the two different options, we're either asking for money to be paid just for the annual expenses, and/or to the option of money to be set aside for individuals that are not able to pay for their, their forty-dollar fee, which we do not want to include a financial hardship on these individuals.
I, no questions.
I, if I could, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to approve, it's a very tight contract, the results are terrific, and I'd make a motion to approve.
What, there's a, well, there is a motion to approve, is there a second?
It's not a.
Oh, it's not, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Okay, so then, we're presenting, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'm sorry, what dollar amount are you asking us for?
Well, in the information that we had presented, we had presented two options, the first option was for seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and we asked for an additional five thousand dollars to be set aside for individuals as a fee waiver for those individuals that are not able to pay their fees, or the other option was just for the full amount of the eighty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Okay, so, walk me through this, the five thousand dollars that we would make available to people is to pay the fee for what exactly?
Is the forty-dollar fee that we charge, that United Way charges, this fee has been charged for over forty years, excuse me, over ten years, it just helps compensate for, to, to run the program.
Okay, and this is a fee for service program, so in, in exchange for that fee, the service that they receive exactly is what?
What, with the service that they receive, once they refer to me, I'll schedule them and take appointment with them, they'll come and see me, we talk about their needs, how many hours that they needed to complete, and what their life schedule is, which is work, family, based off that information, based off what they were charged with, I find them an agency, nonprofit, to place them out, I keep in contact with them, the placement agency, and also the probation officer, to keep the communication going and to ensure that they complete their hours successfully in the time that's allowed, that has been ordered by the judge or by the probation officer.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kraft.
With this additional money, the five thousand dollars, is that what you're asking, am I reading it right?
We are asking, depending what's the option, that we are asking if the full amount of the eighty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty is, with that amount, we're asking for all fees to be waived, so that the individuals that will come and see us, we're not going to charge them.
Do we have experience waiving the fees for people?
Yes.
Good, okay, and the success rate of people we waive the fees for is?
Is tremendous, based on your.
Okay, good.
Yes.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, sorry for the mishap, I thought since it was there, it was action, so, Justin, let me, let me, let me talk about it so openly, so we talk about where we are, so I talked a little bit to Justin about this, and I expressed to him that the board's had it for a while, what I talked to him about, and since his presentation is there, is that I'd, correct me if I'm wrong, so the board is going to put additional money in to, because it's always been the, the thing, is to put some skin in the game unless you actually absolutely couldn't afford it, and so the board will put the money up to waive the fee, that if they could make the fee, the fee would go to United Way to pay the program, pay for the program, am I right?
That's one of the, yeah, one of the pieces of it, I guess.
So my, my suggestion. So my suggestion was just to... Because it's a dialogue with some board members that I've had at some point, to keep the amount the same, but make the record reflect that you all will put that money up for the fee. Because if you're gonna... If you're going to get the fee, if they pay, then you just kind of got a lack of examples, like a revolving loan fund. You put it up, they pay it, you get it back. If they waive it, you put it in. But I'm saying, keep the money the same. And we put the money in to run this pilot, because I am interested in you running the pilot with corrections in regards to those people that are sitting there and that can't afford bail, that they can... We can work this thing out to work it off pretty quick, and they can get out. Because that will save us some money in the long run. I'd rather... And it's just a philosophical thing, no thing. I'd rather have it reflect that we're putting the money in for the service that helped benefit the jail, and you all putting a share in, so it's still kind of a public part in the share. Because the share from us is always going up. And put it like that. So I just put that out there in full disclosure of the conversation that we had. Commissioner Kraft.
Chris.
Yes. This ties in very well with the presentation about third-party administrators from David Herzog last week. And he sent me a letter that this would tie in again very well with. So I'm gonna distribute that letter this afternoon. Thank you.
Commissioner Borg.
Thank you for being here today. And I actually didn't think it was action, so I'm good. I thought it was just a presentation, since we're involved in budget. But I do want to have further conversation about what Commissioner Rogers was talking about, how we can incorporate and make sure that that's a piece of this. The other thing is, probably during our budget conversations, the money for this or the dollars for this could potentially come from corrections out of our incarcerated individuals fund, the benefit fund, for this. So, anyway, I just want to have further conversation because I think it's a very good idea to look at a certain population, to see how we can serve those reentering, so...
And if I could just add, to be clear, so our costs to operate the program as proposed here, so the CRCSP program, as well as us piloting the partnership with corrections, is that $91,794. And then, United Way is willing to put the... Is to put our costs towards indirect, and so we're asking for the difference. The options that we presented has come historically from the county, is to include this pot of money that's specifically earmarked for fees. So we wanted to include that as kind of honoring the current system, if there's any concern about that.
And regarding... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'll...
Okay, regarding to the fee waiver amounts, I'm not the one who makes that decision. The probation officer makes that decision. So if an individual comes to me and says, "I can't pay the fee, I have to get permission from the probation officer." They make the final decision, I do not. And they can make that final decision either at their first appointment or at their exit appointment, when they come back and see me, when I validate the hour. So it's something that I don't personally make the decision on, the probation officer makes that decision on, if they pay or not.
So the $91,794 that you have stated in your letter includes the population that Commissioner Rogers is talking about?
Yes, yeah. So it would be the... We're piloting that program, and we believe, based on our conversations with Dr. Foxall and his team, that we'd be able to do the pilot for this and then learn from that and come back in 18 months and have a deeper discussion about what we've learned from that. It wouldn't be serving the entire population, just us, maybe 50 to 60% of who they think they would be serving.
But that is include... So your $10,344, we're $81,450. But where does it say the number of individuals we're currently providing? Okay, we've served... Well, for the fiscal... What I'm trying to see is, how many individuals are you going to increase in this pilot with that number of 91,000?
300.
300 more people?
Annually. So we're looking at probably the most we'll probably get is up to 25 individuals, which should probably... Excuse me, monthly, which should be about six people a day. But please keep in mind, the individuals that come and see me from probation, they have a longer time span to complete their probation hours. So for example, if they're assigned, say, 100 hours, they may be on probation for a minimum of nine months, sometimes up to five years, depending on what the judge has ordered them. The individuals that I will be seeing through the OWP program is based off fines and fees that they're not able to pay. So based off that information and meetings that I have had with Judge Kye, Mike Boyle, Mark Foxall and his team, we have come up with a structure and a process that individuals that have to pay, for example, up to $150 for fines and fees that are not able to pay, they have to do maybe eight hours of community service. We figured out a process to kind of balance, like how many hours based off the pay. So the individuals that are coming to me through OWP is going to be a faster rotation, since they only have a limited amount of time to get their hours done.
And I'm... And what I talked about, I just wanted to be open with it. We can make it work however it is. But, and Mark, but I don't know if this is a question for you, because when I talked to them, it was very attractive to make this kind of a part of the pretrial grid. And I guess the question, based on what they're saying now, is, can you almost, like, person comes in, they owe $90, $180, two days? You know, do we even, if the judge has agreed, do we even have to waste the money to let them in? Can they almost have credit, like, okay, you owe two days, $180, you owe 16 hours of community service, let's say, oh, well, 48 hours of community service? They almost got... You know, I guess that's on you all, since you were doing administration of it somehow, to keep track of that and make sure they fulfill it. And don't even let them in. If they owe, you know, they owe credit of they're gonna do these community service hours so that the population decreases. That's what I'm thinking. But you gotta work through logistics of that, and that becomes a part of the grid, particularly if they're low level and they're poor and can't afford it. You just gotta commit to the community service, and we don't even let you in. Now, if you don't do the community service, then we have to find a way to check that somehow, but they gotta show up for the community service. And that's what I'm thinking in that respect. You got the floor, and then I'll go to Commissioner Boyle.
Well...
We need to keep focusing on the purpose of this. The purpose is to keep people out of the facility at high cost. That's all I could say. I mean, you know, and I think that paying the fee is a small charge that develops a great deal of savings.
I have an issue with the fee. I just wanted to look a little more structural. However it is, we get there, I'm talking about the same amount, so I won't worry about that.
But I guess my... I was looking more at the population that is currently in there, that we could take a look at, that could... I mean, you're right, that they don't come in.
That's the pilot. That's the pilot.
Oh, it is? The ones that are in there?
Yeah, I don't know. That's my understanding from talking to them about how the pilot was. The question is, I don't know how they administer it. Because my thought is, what I'm saying is, it... Because if you're saying the pace is going to be quicker, what I'm saying is, it does no good for the pilot for a judge who, okay, we got you all. The understanding is, why would they even set foot in there? If they are low level and they owe, you know they're gonna be in there two days immediately, how do we send them to you? They served the hours, you make sure they check off the hours. Because them sitting there, they... It sounds like they'll serve two days before they can even get you to the program. That's why I'm just trying to put it out there and make sure.
The population that we're gonna be serving is the individuals that are currently not incarcerated. They're going in front of the judge and saying that I'm not able to pay these fees. And so they'll ask if you want to go through the OWP program. Well, instead, if they say yes, instead of walking down to the correction facility to get signed up, they're gonna come and see me. So then, once they get that approval, then they have 24 hours from approval to come and see me to get the process done.
Okay, that's before they get in?
Yeah, they won't get in.
They won't get in?
Yeah, there's two pipelines to OWP. One directly from courts and one when you're exiting corrections.
Okay. Okay, all right. That's good.
And I apologize for not getting this on action. I wasn't paying attention. I assumed it was action. You know what assume means.
So, we're good. We'll be on next week's agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, yeah, we'll include it in the budget process, but go from there.
All right, thank you.
But it sounds like you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll back up to item D, community services. Item one, the annual public evaluation of the Pheasant Point landfill operations and update on solid waste-related items. Kent.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Hall, Environmental Services Director. Yeah, I'm fine. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Hall, Environmental Services Director. Today, real briefly, I'm gonna walk you through the annual contract review for waste management that is called for in our contract with waste management. So I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly, and they'll have a chance to chime in with questions at the end. And just from a location standpoint, for those folks who don't know where the Pheasant Point landfill is, it's about five miles west of Bennington, just north of Highway 36 at 216th Street. And zooming in a little bit further, this is the active landfill footprint. It's about a full square mile. Right next to it is the old landfill site, which was closed in approximately 2003. And then, also wanted to point out for reference, the OPPD Energy Plant, which is right there, kind of at the confluence of the two. And this is actually pulling methane off of both facilities right now and putting electricity back into the grid. That particular piece isn't part of the contract, but just for context to provide that. So the services are provided. We actually operate with county employees, the scale house, you see in the upper left, the working face, typical photo where we've got a garbage truck that's dumping there, and that's placed in a fill area and covered on a daily basis. Waste Management also provides a trash cleanup service along the highways and the roads, approximately two miles out from the landfill, and may extend a little bit further from that. We discontinued our additional trash cleanup along the other roads out there and now cooperate with the Department of Transportation on that when we get complaints. And so that's the way we're handling that now. The scale rates, we just made our annual adjustment in December. You actually approved that in October, and to be effective on December 1st of 2017. That was a 2% adjustment this year. And so you can see the current scale rate, which will be in effect through the November 30th of this year. So back in 2009, you authorized me as Department of Environmental Services Director to negotiate with Waste Management special event disposal projects. And to date, there've been 205 of those. 20 of them are active right now. To date, going back to 2009, we've collected, netted to the county, about $1.38 million in revenue. The revenue this past year was $89,502. So in addition to the CPI adjustment, which is technically an amendment to the contract, we also did an amendment back in December, effective December 1st, to add some special handling fees to pick up some additional handling that Waste Management does on their end after the scale. And these are special fees that just require some additional hand... That take care of some additional handling on their part. The county does get a cut of that as well. And then we also changed the hours of operation. And those hours are right now, as you see on the screen, they're standardized and they're year-round. From a... Excuse me. From the tonnage comparison, I've given you this graph to show over the last 10 years kind of where the tonnage has gone. The average has been about 540,000 tons per year. This past year, it was a little bit above that, at about 612,000 tons. Right now, we're looking at landfill life expectancy of around 126 years. That, if you do the math, that puts it probably in about 2144, something like that. My guess is that no one in this room will probably see that day, although I've heard that Dan's working on a longevity plan that's... So with that, those are my presentation items. Happy to entertain you. Any questions you have on the contract, per se?
Get to Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Borg.
One is just a request. If you could send electronically or however, the PowerPoint, there is no equivalent document of that in the backup side. I'd just like to have it. Whatever's easier for you to do.
Yes. Commissioner, I'll do one better for you. I will take the salient talking points and summarize that for you. I was planning on doing that already.
Thank you. The other is relative to the cities considering some kind of a ban on plastic bags at point of retail sale in, I guess, the city of Omaha. Would we be able to tell what if any impact that would have on our tonnage? Is there any way at all that we could figure out what that would be?
Plastic bags weigh virtually nothing.
Right.
It's... I think if you looked at it from a tonnage standpoint, you would see probably negligible changes there. I think the big impact is that if you eliminate plastic bags out of the waste stream, that it eliminates a bunch of your potential trash issues and creates... I mean, plastic bags are a real problem for recycling and the material recovery facilities, for example. They spend several hours a day just cutting plastic bags out of their sorting equipment and stuff. So there are other things that would benefit there. I just don't see that there would be a huge difference in tonnage, just because plastic bags don't weigh that much.
Okay. I noticed in your presentation, you had it look like somebody picking stuff up along the road.
Correct. That was just a representative... That's just representing Waste Management and their efforts to patrol the two miles leading out from the landfill. They provide trash pickup services within that area.
And having been out there and toured the facility, I kind of... It's not my neck of the woods, but I kind of knew I was getting close because of the increase of the number of plastic bags everywhere, fences, trees, side of the road. So those individuals that Waste Management employs, in part, I mean, that's their job, is to pick up these plastic bags that are blowing all over the place?
Let me tell you, Raul Palmer, who's the site manager for Waste Management, I will have him address that particular question.
Hello, Commissioner. Hello, Commissioner Raul Palmer with Waste Management. And to answer your question, yes, we do hire people to walk... We're responsible for two miles in every direction. And we do hire people to go out along the roads and pick up those bags, and anything else that is out there.
So the stuff that they're collecting, I mean, plastic bags would be a considerable portion of what they're actually picking up?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of them, yeah.
And thanks again for the tour. You did a great job.
No problem. Anytime. Anytime. You're all invited anytime you want.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Borg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, your tour was most helpful when I went out. But what... Can you go back to your slide, Kent, on the tonnage? Okay, so I've talked about this before, and that is, it's a selfish concern, but it directly impacts the revenue that we get and how it helps our taxpayers with our budgeting process. So the special project started in 2000, what, '16?
2009.
'19?
I would say, for the most part, we really didn't see any impact until 2010.
So, okay, so as we move along, then, did we do more in '12 and '13 of those? Is that... Or, I mean, I know we raised the fee as well in that timeframe, didn't we?
This... But this is just tonnage. This doesn't... This isn't reflecting...
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
This isn't reflecting revenue. But, I mean, the revenue will go along. As the tonnage goes up, the revenue's gonna go up generally. As the tonnage goes up, the revenue's gonna go up generally. But one of the things that, to keep in mind, is that there are some environmental events that happened in this timeframe. In 2011, there was, the Missouri River happened to be a little bit high, and so there were some things that went on, probably as a result of that. There were some hailstorms and so on. Those types of events bring a fair amount of high-tonnage materials in. And there were some other special event projects that did come in that time period. And so, it fluctuates, and those special events are time-sensitive, and they have a definite start and stop time. So, you'll see spikes, you know, on a particular month that you wouldn't see because that project is over, type of thing.
So, I think what would be interesting is if we had another graph below that or alongside of it that showed our revenue when the increase of tonnage happens. The only reason I bring that up is because, again, none of us are, I don't think we are, anti-environment, so we want to be good to the environment. But again, the less that we take to our landfill, the less tonnage, the less revenue we get as a county. And so, if there are things or ways, like the special project idea, where we look at, if we're gonna take less of something, what else can we bring in to offset that loss of tonnage to not affect our revenue? So, I think we just have to be very careful of that, especially with the life expectancy of 126 years. Like you said, nobody here's gonna have to worry about citing another landfill, and Commissioner Duda and I have had the privilege of being here to do that. Not fun. But, again, I think we just have to be aware of that, because I don't know if people really are aware that how much that affects our budget. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there and say we need to really kind of keep a close eye on that and talk about that as we start saying, put less of this or put less of that in the landfill. This is how it affects our revenue.
Correct. And keep that in mind as I go through this next little bit of stuff down here.
You got another question, Kent, though?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Yes, I want to add, it really files up with what Commissioner Borgson brought up. Is anyone doing anything to sell the services of the landfill?
Well, Waste Management is out there actively looking for projects, and part of the reason that the special event projects were put in place was to provide a more level playing field for them, because obviously, as a public contract with Douglas County, that particular scale rate is published. And if everybody has to bid based on that, then it's easy for a competitor to simply undercut, because they already know what the price is gonna be. And so, the special event projects give them an opportunity to...
I'm already talking about something else. I'm talking about other counties, you know, Mills County and others, and Sarpy and all the rest, wherever they go now, I'm not sure where they go. I've kept my distance from the landfill, because you don't remember, I was the attorney who represented the property owner who got a seven-to-nothing vote on this board for the landfill site. So, anyway, that's why I keep my distance and usually don't make any comment, but I'm curious about whether there's any contact with Sarpy County or anybody else around the area about using our landfill as opposed to others that are a distance. I guess I'll put it that way, and I don't need an answer, but I think it might be something you want to consider if you haven't. The other thing that ties in with what Commissioner Borgson said, do we have a construction debris site that we operate? I think we used to in the past, that took debris from buildings that were torn down and so forth. Do we have that?
Well, some of the, some of the special event projects are that.
A special event, I don't get that.
Construction demolition debris related.
Okay, a special event, I don't really, it sounds like it's kind of like a cleanup. Is that what you're talking about, or just...
Well, some of them are. Some of them might be, some of them might be a, for example, a contaminated soil site where there needs to be some remediation done. And some, there's a wide, wide variety of special event projects. They all fit within that kind of special waste category. That was in the resolution in 2009.
I have to pass on one of the things, when I was doing this, that I, years ago, that I saw that was really remarkable, was contaminated soil, was contaminated from a gas station with oil and everything in it. They had a huge thing, a big drum that they rotated, and they set the soil on fire, and it burned the oil out, and then it was cleaned, pretty well cleaned up to bury it, to use it. Anyway, you know, my neutrality is still there, and I appreciate the tour, too. The only thing I didn't get is that, did everybody else have to take garbage with them when they left? Oh, anyway. Thanks a lot, you're doing a great job. Thanks, you too, Kent.
You got more?
Any other questions on this?
No, no other questions, so you got more to the presentation.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna segue into just an update on a number of solid waste issues that are current. Some of them have kind of been touched on already. One of them is really, and this, for the most part, I'm gonna talk about three particular issues here. One is kind of what the city of Omaha is doing with their collection contract and the impacts there. The second is related to the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan that was updated in 2012 through MAPPA. And then, just some opportunities that are sitting out there on the horizon, which kind of get to a little bit about the revenue piece, and a little bit about how we can better take some opportunities to perhaps capture some revenue to offset some existing expenses, and particularly looking at perhaps the under-the-sink situation. So, for example, to start off with the Omaha Collection Contract, they are in the process of developing a request for bid right now. That is hopefully gonna be out on the street within the next couple of months, hopefully by no later than July. And that's going to substantially change the way Omaha provides that service. Right now, it's very much a manual service, and they're going to an automated truck-type service, so you would get away from the open bins and go to more of a cart system. The other big issue out there right now that the city is kind of working with is what to do with yard waste. Excuse me. That has been in the news for the last couple of years. Right now, they are picking that up separately. But the big issue is, how do you handle kind of the spikes in the spring and the fall, where about 35% of yard waste is picked up within about an eight-week total period? So, how do you handle that? So, I think that's one thing they're wrestling with right now, as far as getting the request for bid out there. But there will be options, and so I will keep you updated, and I'm sure this is gonna be in the news quite a bit as it moves forward. But there's opportunities potentially there. There are certainly impacts when it comes to yard waste. Are they gonna take some of it and co-mingling it and take it to the landfill? Are they gonna compost it? There's certainly opportunities for not producing as much yard waste in the first place and leaving a lot of that on your lawn clippings and things, on your yard, and just to help improve soil, which is another big issue. The Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, which was updated in 2012, has a number of goals and objectives that are meant to be implemented over the course of the 20-year plan. So, one of them calls out a task force to be implemented, and in 2014, we started meeting as a task force, and mainly with public entities, but also some other, some private sector folks. Commissioner Kraft sits on that task force. And on about the same time, Heartland 2050, and that regional planning effort came along, and through the Natural Resources Committee portion of that, there's a solid waste working group. These two, and the solid waste working group has a number of strategies in the Heartland 2050 Action Plan. There's a lot of overlap between those strategies and what's called out in the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan. And so, it made a lot of sense for those groups to meet together. So, we've been doing that for the last, essentially, year and a half, two years, and going forward here. So, there's really three big items that we're talking about right now. One is to establish and fund a coordinator position, and I just use coordinator in quotes. That particular position would support the task force in the implementation of those solid waste management goals and objectives. Education and outreach on solid waste is something that's called out in the plan, it's called out in Heartland 2050. There are implications, again, when you look at revenue. If we are educating people, what are we educating them about in terms of solid waste? A lot of people have a real disconnect. You know, you put the trash out, and then you just kind of, it's out of mine, we don't really know where it goes, but they just know, hey, somebody else takes it and they deal with it, and I don't have to. And of course, funding is always the big elephant room. How do we pay for some of these things? So, one of the things that the working group did a couple months ago, back in March, was to team up with UNO, Center for Business Development there, MAPPA, Heartland 2050, and then with some, also some support from HDR. There's a product called Think Tank, it's an electronic collaboration tool, and the whole point of this was to get folks in a room, a lot of different stakeholders, solid waste stakeholders, and get information from them, and get their thoughts and opinions on these particular education outreach items, and the, how this particular coordinator position should be funded going forward. So, here are just a number of folks that were representatives of these particular companies and entities. In the red, those represent recycling, lower left, some trash haulers, collectors, and the yellow type there, just a variety of different folks that, you know, environmental trusts, zoo, public schools, extension, and then consulting engineers over here on the other side. Public entities in black there, and then some environmental groups and community groups, including the Omaha Chamber, for example. So, one of the, one of the interesting points here is that, if you look at the Integrated Solid Waste Management Act that was passed by the state of Nebraska in the early 90s, at the core of its policy is, says that we should be following kind of a solid waste hierarchy. And that's, this is the exact thing pulled from the Integrated Solid Waste Management Act of Nebraska, that talks about, we should have as a priority, volume reduction at the source. Ironically, most of the stuff that we do related to solid waste is really kind of at the second tier. We spend quite a bit of money and resources kind of dealing with recycling and reuse and so on. And that's great, that's part of the local plan as well, to try to get more of that happening. And then, when we get to the third tier, we have land disposal. We don't do a lot with the bottom two. Excuse me. But the question is, when you get back to the education outreach piece, you know, what should we be talking about? And so, we ask at this, at the Think Tank event, you know, volume reduction at the source is supposed to be, per state policy, what we should be doing. So, how should we be doing some of that? And, you know, what are obstacles to making some of that happen? So, that was, that was part of that discussion. And then, as we talked about the coordinator position, what should that particular coordinator be doing? And so, we, from the group, came up with a number of different kind of subject areas that you see there on the screen. Those are the types of things that we will then be taking and talking about in a couple weeks on May 23rd. And we are fortunate to have Cardinal Owen Steen, who works with the Heartland 2050 as a facilitator. She's going to facilitate that session. We are working to kind of massage the raw data that we got from the Think Tank group. And I'll just point out, if you're not familiar with Think Tank, the whole purpose behind doing that was to get folks in a room and not have it dominated by certain personalities. Think Tank allows you to provide input anonymously. It is a really nice tool, because you can get a lot of good input from a lot of diverse viewpoints, and you can do it when, you know, if you're the shy person that doesn't want to say anything in front of a group, you can still get your point across. So, that was the reason we chose that particular format, and then we'll kind of take the next steps and digest it and prioritize here on May 23rd. Last thing I wanted to kind of end with was, in 2016, legislature authorized LV 1101 Solid Waste Program Study, looking at all of the Nebraska Department of Environmental Equality Solid Waste Programs. And out of that, there are going to be some opportunities. One of the things is the $1.25 fee per ton that is generated with every ton of solid waste deposited at every Nebraska landfill. That $1.25 fee was established in the early 90s, it's never changed. So, one of the opportunities is to look at an increase in that fee. It would take legislative action, but that would provide some additional funds to be able to perhaps, one, fund the coordinator position, two, fund something like under-the-sink. Right now, we're using, you know, county funds that come off of our revenue, piece of the revenue, to be able to fund part of that. So, if we had a more dedicated source there that we could pull from, that would lessen our expense from Douglas County. It would still be paid for for landfill funds, but it would be coming out of that tipping piece that currently goes to DEQ. So, I think there's an opportunity there. That's been expressed, and that's part of the record and part of the study. That is in the hands of the legislature right now. There are perhaps other opportunities there as well, in terms of trying to get away from some of the grant dependency for the under-the-sink facility, for example, and trying to go to a more dedicated funding source that, to where we don't have to apply for grants on a continual basis, but it's a more dedicated and sustainable source. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you may have on that particular piece.
Commissioner Kraft, Boyle, and Borgson.
Yes, I attended the Think Tank, and it was fantastic. If you've never done the Think Tank process, it makes a meeting and collaboration much easier. The Orange Bag Program, when I put the candy wrappers and the aluminum foil bags and potato chip bags in the, and my Ziploc bags in the orange bag, and put it in my recycling bin, what happens to those products? Are they being burnt? Are they being recycled in plastic? Are they creating energy?
My understanding with the Orange Bag Program is that those are set aside at the recovery facility, and then they go to an incineration process, so it is a burning and energy process.
Just a waste reduction, not an energy process?
It's a waste reduction to energy, so it's a waste-to-energy type process right now.
And I've asked this a number of times about under-the-sink and the hours. Have we set weekday hours every day, or weekday and Saturday hours? Are they still kind of mishmash?
There's a little bit of a mishmash there, and part of that is the way that, the way the city has it set up to facilitate staffing for that, and to try to identify the hours and the days and the times when it's most needed. There's also a fair amount of time that they have to do processing, and so that plays into it as well.
And my other issue, I've mentioned many times, when the city has their cleanup days, they should have a mobile under-the-sink program, take it to where the people are collecting their dumpsters and electronics and things, and it would help keep that stuff out of the landfill. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, Dan Borgson.
Hey, I've mentioned that many a time.
Didn't Mr. Kavanaugh have a question? I thought he was next before me.
He's got a lunch, he's, he's got a legit, he's got a work...
He left? I wanted to ask about, or ask a question about this coordinator. What, is it budgeted somewhere? Who is the, who pays?
Well, right now, it's not budgeted. No, it is a, it is a position that is called for in the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan that was updated in 2012. And so, right now, yes, we're, we've kind of identified some potential duties for that particular position, but in terms of... of how it's going to be funded, no, we don't have, we don't have that identified yet.
I'd like to see MAPPA pay for it. I don't want to, either that or have some dumping fees paid for it or something, I don't, I really don't want to see it. I'm not too thrilled about it, but I suppose, I'm not thrilled about those things anyway, but I really don't want to pay for it, so let's figure out some way to give it to MAPPA, they're flush with money, I think. I do appreciate your working on getting a sign put up out of the, under the sink because they roll from two to four on Tuesday and from six to nine on Thursday, it was awful. So they did put up a sign, which helps when you're driving out there with all your slop, and you pull up, at least there's a sign there that says, sorry, we're not open this, this hour. So anyway, I, I think it'd be nice if they did have some steady hours, it's just really unusual. They're nice people, but it's a little bit strange. I guess that's all that I'll, I'll say, but I don't want to pay for that coordinator.
Mike, I love the way you frame things.
Thanks.
Commissioner Borgson.
And, don't fall over, Commissioner Kraft, but I actually like your mobile idea. And I would like to see money go to that before I see a coordinator, money going to a coordinator, but again, in the overall scheme of things, I think we need to look at the projections, well, we need to look at what our revenues have been for the last 10 years, and what we project those revenues to be with these changes that could potentially occur with us doing things differently at our landfill. That, I just, I just want us to stay focused on that piece of it, which is just as important as trying to save our environment.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm done talking trash.
So I'm assuming you took care of one and two together?
That's, that's one and two, excuse me, no, the, the comp plan, I haven't gotten to yet.
Go with it.
Okay.
Item two, the comprehensive land use development plan, continue.
Okay, again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. We retained RDG planning and design to help us with the updated comprehensive plan, it was last updated in 2006. So, we, we'd like to have that, that plan updated about every 10 years, and so that's why we've identi, identified this update. And we've got three items I'm gonna, gonna touch on today, basically kind of where we're at today, what, what specific policy items that we are changing, are proposing to change in the plan, and then some next steps. So, these particular things are, are not changing, these are the base, base policies in the plan, maintaining conservation design, and then ensuring that we have development following full municipal services, and it's not going to happen until we have full municipal services there, that eliminates the hopscot and leapfrog development. We did, with the help of RDG, do some listening, learning sessions with a bunch of different groups here that, that are listed on your screen. There you go. So, we have these, these listening and learning sessions, and so you can see the, the various groups that we brought in, and these were in group sessions, and then RDG followed up with a survey to roughly eighty-four individuals and representing folks that had attended those groups, and received fifty-four responses back, which was a really good return. And out of that, we really found four things that, that we wanted to focus on and needed to be added in terms of additional things to this particular comprehensive plan. One was to enhance the energy element piece in the plan, we added a very kind of bare bones element a couple of years ago, and we need, just need to enhance that and provide some more specificity there. Local food production is a, is a hot topic, it is a topic that is, is really not addressed at all in our current plan, and there are a number of efforts by groups in the metropolitan area, there's a growing foods connection effort from a few years ago, Commissioner Rogers is part of that, and continuing to look at, at local food production to help address hunger needs in the community, food deserts, those types of things, there's a lot of kind of eye-opening things, you know, the United Way has, has a huge effort going, and there's some, some efforts to kind of coordinate across a lot of different, different entities to try to do a better job of, of feeding the people who need, need food, and to get food to those places in the community where it's just not very available. And it's surprising, when you look at a map, where those places are, it's not all where you might think it, it is. So, at the very least, there will be definitions, use types and things in, in the new comprehensive plan and the resulting regulations that will facilitate local food production. The solid waste related items, some of them are somewhat related to what we just talked about, but this is mainly providing some additional clarification for some things that, that potentially could be supporting uses around the landfill, for example. I think it potentially gets to a little bit of Commissioner Boyle's marketing or selling question, are there some additional facilities or, or things in the neighborhood out there that might be doable? Is there a way to reclaim some materials and, and provide some economic benefit for some of that waste stream? And then some stormwater related clarifications as well. In terms of energy, the people that we talked to said these were some things that were important to them. The food, local food production, everyone said, yes, this is an important item, and we need to encourage and prioritize that in some areas of the county, solid waste, I just, this, this slide there just showing the, kind of the, the diversity of things that you can pull out of the waste stream, and the fact that, that more and more companies seem to be wanting to go to a zero waste type of mentality where they don't want to provide, they don't want to send things to the landfill. And so, to Commissioner Borgson's point, I mean, we need to kind of assess kind of where that impact is. It was one of the reasons why we wanted to have the Chamber of Commerce at the Think Tank event, and, and have some of those folks who are looking more community-wide, looking to bring companies to the metropolitan area. A lot of those companies seem to have a very zero-waste corporate ethic, and so, if, if we're going to go after those kind of companies as a community, are we going to have to change some of our infrastructure related to waste? And I'm sorry, I guess I did fall back on talking trash there for a minute. So, and stormwater management, just one of the, one of the big items there is, is to look at it on a watershed basis as opposed to having single regulations and single policies that would be unified, because we do have some real dichotomy in the Papua watershed area that is handled, and the, the dynamics of that are a lot different than in the floodplain between the plat and the Alcorn. So, just recognizing those differences. And finally, we're going to simplify the, the future land use map, and we've just eliminated some of the, kind of the, the clutter to this particular map, this is kind of what it's proposed to look like. And in some of the, the ag areas, especially the green, we're going to try to, to phrase that so that, that we do show local food production as a priority in those areas, should the opportunities present themselves. So, with that, next steps, we're going to be going back to the Planning Commission in June and presenting a final plan to them for consideration, they'll make a recommendation, and it'll come back to you probably as early as July, but most likely early August. So with that, any questions for me?
Commissioner Boyle.
You know, I appreciate what you're saying about the, the issues you brought up, you know, about gardens and energy efficiency and all the rest, it seems like it's, I don't mean to be critical, because I know you are environmental services and those things are environmental issues, I agree with you, but I, I just wonder, it sounds a little bit like mission drift, because there are organizations that are doing this, I mean, OPPD has got all sorts of things they're doing, solar and other options and wind, and there's some candidates that are already pushing it, which are, it's really, I like to see. And the other thing is, you know, with, with the food, there are some organizations that do all those things, and I, and extensions involved in quite a few of these, one of my favorites. But anyway, so they're involved in this as well, and I just wonder whether, are we duplicating something, or is, what's the idea? And, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, great question, and I'm glad you asked that because it provides me an opportunity to clarify.
Yeah.
What, what we're trying to do, and, and a lot of what happens, the comprehensive plan serves as the basis for zoning, and so, when you have zoning, you have certain uses that are acceptable, certain uses that are not. And right now, local food production, you know, even things like composting and other stuff like that that are related, we don't have a very good definition, or in some cases, we don't have any language in the, in the current plan and our regulations that address that. And so, if someone, for example, the, some of the groups that you mentioned that are working on this, they said, hey, we've got an opportunity to do this, if we don't have the framework for them to do that, you know, to facilitate that, we're, we're not doing it per se, we, we are facilitating the process. And so, when somebody comes in and say, hey, I would like to do a composting operation because then that'll support this local farm that's going to start raising fruits and vegetables for whoever in the community. And so, we need to be able to support those uses and have appropriate definitions, so when they come in, hey, this is exactly what they need to do, and that process, we're not, we've got a process for them to follow, that, that makes sense, so, great question.
Okay, I wanted to ask a few, and I, I have met this woman a couple, I've seen her a couple of times, and she's very remarkable, she started a, a service of, I think she goes to all sorts of places, grocery stores and restaurants and so forth, but the grocery stores is really pretty interesting. What she picks up in many cases is, she calls it ugly vegetables, vegetables that are a little unusual looking, they're, they're helpful, they're good, but the point is that they're, people don't, they look at them, oh my goodness, I don't want to buy that, that tomato looks like a turkey or something. Anyway, she has got a couple of trucks that she's got to drive around, she's just bought another truck, and she's somebody I think that we ought to really get behind and help because it makes it, the waste is, makes me crazy. So anyway, I just throw that out there, I don't know if you're, anyone is, maybe you are married.
Saving grace.
Have you, have you worked professionally, excuse me, Mr. Rogers, or?
No, she, this is two years ago, she, go, go ahead.
Commissioner Rogers and I had this discussion a couple of years ago on how we can utilize those food sources that are being wasted, and one of the things we actually kind of narrowed it down and focused on was at our correction facility.
Oh, yeah.
And, and when you're done, I'll talk a little bit more.
I'm done, go ahead.
Well, what I was, what, we were looking at the program that was called FUSE, the frequent user, what's that, frequent?
I can't even remember.
Frequent users' service engagement, and so, what, what it, what we were trying to do was figure out how we could utilize the population of the incarcerated folks that we keep seeing coming through the system, in teaching them or giving them the opportunity for housing and a job.
Yeah.
And so, as we were sitting here, I'm, I'm thinking, maybe we need to re-engage that conversation into seeing how we can utilize those services at our, with our jail population, this could be the youth center as well, but then how, how do we, maybe we can employ or create a composting service where we utilize these individuals to, to learn the trade, so when they get out, they're actually learning something that they could go and be productive on, so.
Okay, well, I, this is off point somewhat, but one of the things that I've thought about, what I'd like to see is operating a, sort of a, I'll use the name Jensen Tire Center, or something like that, Omaha, the company, the new Omaha, you know, company that does this sort of servicing automobiles, and do that sort of thing so that people who are in there can learn a skill of working on vehicles and engines, and maybe, you know, step in, be hired, or step into a trade someplace in, in the city. And there are some other things too, that, you know, along those lines that I'd like to explore in addition to this, so, sorry to get off beam, but the last thing I want to ask you is, okay, so, the planning board in June, you're going to bring something to them, and then you're going to bring it to us, is what you're doing, you're going to present to them what you presented to us and ask us to fund this coordinator and all that stuff, is that what's, you think's going to happen?
No, the, no, the coordinator piece isn't part of that, this at all. No, this is, this is a comprehensive plan update, we presented the, the comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission, the, the main elements in April, and I'm just providing that update to you, kind of where we're at, and the full plan will go to the, to the Planning Commission in June, and then it'll come back to you for consideration.
Well, in spite of my, what you may see as, you know, criticism, it's not, you're doing an excellent job as director, always have, you're very progressive, and I like what you do, and you're just, today has been a really remarkable day because we've had so many extraordinarily competent people that work for the county come to the podium, and you're one of them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson, did you still need to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to, again, talk about that, that piece that, that I think should be in our comprehensive plan about the food issue, in that maybe we could put together a subgroup of us to look at that again. The health department would have to be involved, and it, it really branched out to more than our correctional facility, it was restaurants, it was stores, it was what happens with that still good but unused food, when we have folks right here in our community that are desperate for, for, for food. So, maybe we can re-engage in that conversation and see what we could do about it, and obviously, Kent, we would pull you in as well, so, now that, it would be a part of our, our comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Dooley.
I appreciate the, in the comp plan, looking at the food production, I think that's a, a timely and, and appropriate step. Listening to an interview a couple of days ago out, out at Napa Valley, where the only reason they still have so much agriculture out there is because years ago, they said agriculture is the highest and best use for this land. As a farmer, I like to hear that. Usually, farming is, you know, the, the last thing, if you can't use it for anything else, then go ahead and farm it. So I appreciate that, that emphasis. We don't always pay a lot of attention to the details, and, and there's an interesting lesson going on right now up in Washington County, where they haven't even had a comp plan that long, but now they've got one, and all of a sudden, they got a lot of controversy with a bunch of people wanting to put big chicken houses up, and basically, it seems that wherever it is zoned ag, they're saying, fine, it's an ag use, and if it's not zoned ag, it doesn't get one. So, all of a sudden, people who never paid any attention to their comp plan are very interested in the details of why it's set up the way that it is, and, and, you know, if everything's going smoothly, we don't pay a whole lot of attention, but this can be pretty critical. I appreciate the emphasis for local food production, we, you know, we're corn and soybeans, we don't do, this isn't our thing, that's the, the vegetable farmers, the small, you know, the, the truck gardeners, and I'm thrilled to, to see it happening.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, this is a, a kind of an enabling piece, that we want enabling language and, and regulations to be able to enable people that they want to do this, and there's opportunities to be able to say, you know, okay, here's a landowner that, that wants to do that, say, okay, doesn't want to do corn and soybeans anymore, then, okay, we're right next to the metro area, here's, here's some areas where it makes a lot of sense to have that kind of, of agricultural production, and you have a labor force that is potentially close enough to be able to facilitate some of those things. So I think there's, there's some good interactions, there's a lot of discussion that's in the community right now, again, I mentioned the United Way, but there's, there's the Heartland 2050, there's an entire working group that's dealing with that food production piece, and there are working elements that we will actually take from that to put in our regulations so that it'll be consistent amongst the, the metro area.
That's great.
So there's, yeah, there's good cooperation, but lots more opportunities for discussion.
Very good, good direction, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, Dan Borgson.
This is really, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking about not speaking, but naturally I'm going to.
Appreciate my thought.
I know. I was, I was catching a late lunch recently, and I went to a restaurant that was closing the lunchtime and going into dinner, and there was a pot of beef, about, beautiful looking beef, and a great big thing, I don't know, ten gallon stainless steel thing, it was brimming, and the person had it on the counter, and I said, I think, can I have one of those sandwiches? Yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, I'm just, just getting ready to throw it away. Going to throw the whole thing away. And this is beyond what, that, the ugly tomato thing. It's food that's processed and getting them from restaurants, it was just awful, the thought of that.
Did you eat it?
Yeah, I ate it. They're getting ready to throw it away because it'd been there.
Couple of weeks.
Yep, well, three weeks. Anyway, at home, you know, we have a, some people have a five second rule when you drop something, ours is 10 minutes. Go ahead, sorry.
Commissioner Borges.
You know, it is kind of amazing, you know, the things that people lived very long lives for leaving food out on the counter or mayonnaise, you know, their sandwiches, they used mayonnaise, and they kept them in their locker, you know, at school. Now it's like, you know, everybody freaks out about it, but so.
I did get petheria, but anyway.
So, and I do feel for Washington County, and I kind of teased Commissioner Kramer, who's, or Supervisor Kramer, who's on the Washington County Board, that I was thinking about coming up and opening up a chicken farm.
Nice move.
But the, the interesting thing that Commissioner Duda talks about is I had the opportunity here recently to visit Palm Beach, Florida. Now, don't laugh when I say the reason we went there was for the Farm Bill Summit. And everybody kept trying to say, oh, right, Palm Beach, the Farm Bill Summit. But the interesting thing is, is that over 87% of their county's land is agriculture. And so we were able to go see the fields of sugarcane and rice and beans. And of course, they're farmers all year, all year round, so once they're done with the sugarcane production, they go on to another crop. But what they're doing is they're also learning how to use the byproducts of that production. So they get, they get done with the processing of the sugarcane, and the byproduct of it, a company's coming in and making disposable plates that biodegrade faster than a plastic plate. And so, again, there's lots of things that are going on, interesting things that are going on that, that those byproducts can be used for. So I'm glad we're, we're looking at it and paying attention to it.
Thank you.
Solad.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Solad.
Item G, human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service. And it's there in the package for everybody. Item two, legislative issues. Just like to note under that that next week, Kelly and Plucker will be coming and presenting their report on the legislative session. So I'll note that for everybody. Anybody got anything else in regards to, Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only two things from today's discussion that I think we need to keep on our legislative agenda is that conversation about that surcharge, but also the legislation that did not get out of committee this year. And that was the EPC, Emergency Protective Custody, language for the mentally ill that I think we still need to keep pushing for.
Okay. With that, yes, we do have a need for executive session for real estate and litigation. And before we move in though, I was asked to note that, please congratulate the clerk, today is his birthday.
Yeah. Twenty, twenty-three again.
Very nicely, thank you.
So we say happy birthday to the clerk. With that, is there, there is a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle, to go into executive session for real estate litigation. Please vote.
For the city will be here at one o'clock, so we may want to.
They'll come pick up. Please vote.
All staff can come get our stuff. During the back there.
I mentioned it.
I know, but it, it's not on there. I'm just saying, it says here, we reserve the right to enter an executive session, we're going to protect the public against with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations, litigation, personnel.
I'll add it in the future.
Not that it's a problem, but it doesn't say so.
Oh, me, sorry.
As, as noted earlier, Commissioner Kavanaugh left at 11:00 AM, so he's absent, but all the commissioners present voting yes, motion passes.
And again, we're going into executive session for real estate and litigation.
There you go.